Buddy?
Hello.
Jingle all the way.
Very nice.
I want Blair's part. I want Blair's part next year.
Seriously, the best.
David had some nice animation in his.
Little dancing.
Choreography.
You're gonna dance right into the wall there for a second.
The fact that you're all talking about my dancing means you're not talking about my singing.
We all recognize you've minored in dance when you got your education.
That's a requirement at the Y, isn't it?
Hello? Oh, no. At least maybe that might be the requirement they put on everybody after I graduated.
Did you graduate from the Y, Wayne?
Yep, got my masters in ninety-one.
I did not know that.
I can't live that down, don't I?
Kind of lowered you on the rung a couple notches, but you're still in good standing.
Okay.
Just kidding.
I had to rise above my graduation affiliation there with the mayor.
Can you hear me now? I had to switch computers.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Can you give us a test? Could you say jingle all the way for us?
Jingle bells, jingle bells.
Jingle.
Working great, working great.
Can you turn Wayne off, though?
Please.
As told by committee, my kids walk around the house and they say, jingle all the way, just to mock you, Blair.
Very good. I like that.
It's my favorite rendition of Jingle Bells ever. Jingle bells all the way.
Oh, it's six o'clock. Are we all here? Apparently, none of us are here.
I didn't see Quinn last I checked.
Oh, there he is.
There's Quinn.
I'm here. I'm hiding.
I don't see Lorraine. Yep. All right. Tell me when we're ready, Dave.
We're ready.
We're live?
We've been streaming this whole time and now we're recording. Ready to go.
Okay. All right. Welcome, everybody. This is the South Weaver City Council meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty. It is now six oh one PM and all council members are in attendance. We need to begin with a declaration and order for electronic meetings, so I will begin with that. I, Joe Shobloom, as the mayor of South Weaver City, do hereby find and declare as follows. Due to the emergency conditions which currently exist in the state of Utah and specifically in Davis County and South Weaver City as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and the recent surge in COVID nineteen infections across the state and in Davis County, the holding of public meetings with an anchor location as defined in the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. And the risks to those who may be present at an anchor location can be substantially mitigated by holding public meetings of the city council pursuant to electronic means that allow for public participation via virtual means. And the city has the means and ability to allow virtual participation in public meetings in accordance with the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. Now, therefore, based upon the foregoing for thirty days from the date of this order, meetings of the South Weaver City Council shall be conducted by electronic means without an anchor location. All right. I'm, I just welcomed everyone, but I see now we have Lorraine Kamalu with us and she is one of our three Davis County Commissioners and asked to join with us tonight, and so we're excited to have her here with us. And Lorraine, I'd like to turn the time over to you for just a minute to talk, and I heard yesterday that you were diagnosed with COVID. Is that correct? And how are you feeling? Oh, we can't hear you. Can you unmute?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't realize I was muted. Hi, everyone. Yeah, you're looking at someone with COVID. But it's mild, thankfully, and I started to feel a little congestion in my throat Wednesday after work. And so I just immediately took every precaution and kind of stayed away and worked from home from that moment. And so thankfully, it's been going as well as you can have COVID go, right? Mild, very mild. In fact, I had some body ache on the weekend and that's gone as of yesterday morning. So I feel like I'm pretty close to maybe being all the way done. At this point, maybe just a little bit of a stuffy nose and that's it. But yeah, no, it's good to experience myself, what people have been going through and you know how important it is to follow all the guidelines and do the isolation. So thankfully, this was already going to be a virtual meeting, right? And so honestly, I just have enjoyed going around occasionally to other cities' council meetings. And I've been to South Weaver more than once, but it's been a little while. And so that's why I thought it would be really great to go again in December. So thank you for letting me come. I really don't have anything that I'm, that I'm wanting to present, so I could answer questions. And the only other thing that I thought of that might be interesting is that the county, so the county organization, every year the three commissioners will take a look again at the portfolios or the different departments we support and the different committees that we are on, the different elected officials that we are liaisons to, and we will, we will be organized for another year. And so I think that our office manager, Janet Hansen, sent that portfolio list out to you, Mayor? Did she send it to you? And then I'll, I see Haley nodding her head. Okay. So if everyone's seen that, that gives you a really good idea of what the county organization entails and which commissioner is working mainly with what. We try not to be too subdivided and for all of us to help all the cities and to to have a working knowledge and work together as commissioners. We do that pretty well. But sometimes you just have to divide up the meetings, and so that kind of shows you what it's looking like for the new year in twenty twenty-one. There's only one other thing, and I was not sure. You know, the minor boundary change that Weber County wanted us to all to work on in the two of your cities, did that have its citizen meeting yet? I was wondering about that.
Not that I'm aware of. I don't believe so, Dave. Do you?
No, we have not, we have not taken any additional steps at this point beyond what the county resolution said. We have been, we have reached out to the Davis County Attorney as well as Uentis City's Attorney and Weber County's Attorney for what the next steps would be to make sure that the longer term discussion and that entire boundary ends up continuing on and making sure that we handle that. So this, this minor adjustment, we're happy with the result. There's probably some steps that you went to city and we need to take together for at least the eastern portion of the, of the boundary. But the discussion for the larger boundary, the entirety there and kind of the longer term solution, I have reached out. We're still looking to schedule a meeting to get those, to get those entities together to know what those next steps are. So we are still working on that, though.
Yeah, and that's, that's the, you basically stated what I'm aware of also, that there will be more discussion about what to do, what makes sense to do for the two counties, the two cities, citizens.
The two cities have gotten together in the past and talked about what we think would be a good solution. We have an exhibit that's created that shows that. Actually, that was created by staff at the county. And so we just need to get the four entities together to talk through the next process and come to an idea of where we want that to be moving forward.
Great. Yeah, thank you for that update. So does anyone have any questions for me regarding anything that you would like to understand or share? Be very happy to clarify or speak to anything that I can about the county.
Hey, I just have something quick. First of all, I'm glad your symptoms have been pretty mild, so that's good and I'm glad you're recovering well from that. I, I know the Box Colbert under Highway eighty-nine for the trail, the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, is slated to go in this coming summer. And so I'm just, we kind of are at crunch time to figure out how that's going to work, where it's going to be located and to acquire easements on both sides of Highway eighty-nine to, to, so that we're able to get the wing walls on that Box Colbert as well. So just if the county would be cognizant of that time crunch and, you know, this is something we need to work together on, so I just wanted to make you aware that that was imminent, coming up soon. And, and appreciate your help and partnership in this, so.
So do I need to follow up? Have you still not heard back from the ones, those who said they would look into it?
No, we, we had a meeting actually, was it this morning or yesterday morning, Dave? With Jeff Euler and Parsons Pitt, and so, and that went well. And we have one scheduled Thursday with Geneva Pitt, so it's coming along. We're getting there.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very important project, and I have heard Mayor talk about that for a long time. It's going to be, it's going to be a very good thing, and I too don't want to see that window of time be drawn out. It needs to happen. So, yeah, I, I will help however you need me to help. And I'm glad you had that meeting and that Jeff Euler was there. Jeff Euler is the, in the Community and Economic Development Department. Maybe some of you know. And so he's, and he functions as a planner. And I think he's, well, for a while, there was someone else also helping with some of the planner type things in that office, but he's, he's the main one. And it was Commissioner Stevenson for those first two years of our being in office who worked with the Community and Economic Development Department. But as of January, that's going to change because he did a swap with Commissioner Elliott. So you'll see that on that sheet that you got. It should show Commissioner Elliott will be the one there. But Kent Anderson is the department director and he has a lot to do with watching over the functions. Addition to, yeah. So Wayne, I think I saw you have something you wanted to ask.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'd like to address a comment I heard you make at the Wasatch Choice Workshop here recently. Something along the lines of a minority group or a special interest group referencing a small group having a say about a road coming through our community. I'm here to set the record straight. I don't know where you got your information from. It is not a small group. There is a large group within the city who do not want the county, the UDOT, Hill Air Force Base, or the state, putting any major highway or road through the center of South Weaver. We like our community the way it is, and there is a large voice that if that gets shoved down our throat, we will fight back.
And thank you for sharing that perspective. Yeah, so I think he's referencing that there was a call for, you're right, the Wasatch Choice. And, yeah, I think I probably didn't voice my, my intent very well, so I apologize for that. It's very important. In fact, my, my master's degree was on citizen engagement and I love and invite lots of citizen engagement. So the more of that you have within your city, I think is a very important thing. And I, what I've seen in my own city, I think maybe I reflected a little bit of my experience in the city where I live. It's hard for, for a lot of citizens to learn about city planning because how would they have that opportunity, right? And so really what I was hoping to see was some of the things that have happened in Caseville for active transportation. They've had a whole bunch of citizen meetings with something that was, that was being asked a few years ago. And so I was kind of hoping to just hear how Wasatch Front Regional Council could help to educate all of the city so that in addition to Planning Commission and city councils, all citizens could have a voice and learn about it. But yeah, my apologies to saying that I think it definitely came across wrong, that there's just a small minority who care. I know there's a lot of people in South Weaver who care deeply. And I've been through your city and know a number of people in your city to know that that is true. So hopefully, I don't know, have they had meetings up there for you all to participate in? For all citizens to participate in Wasatch Choice? Like, we had, we had some multiple in, over the last several years in the part of the county where I live. Have there been those held by Wasatch Front?
I don't believe they've had them open to the community. I mean, the community can always attend because it's a public meeting, but I don't know that any advertising has gone out in the past for the community, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's challenging, in my opinion. I mean, I served as a planning commissioner. And, and when I was a citizen, I was involved in a lot of different things, but I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of of any sort of opportunity to learn about the planning in my city. So that's of great interest to me for citizens to be able to learn. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Wayne. That was good of you.
Thank you.
Who else?
If, if no one else, I just want to say thank you again, Lorraine, for coming and participating in this meeting. I want to say to our city that Lorraine has worked very hard and been very approachable in, in the county. She has really tried to reach out to all the entities. And, you know, we know her as well as any of the commissioners and appreciate all her efforts in serving in the county and in her capacity. So thank you so much, Lorraine.
Oh, it's my pleasure. I absolutely love it. I do love it. And please feel free to, to to reach out to me, any one of you with questions or things you'd like to understand. I know Haley had a question when it was hard to hear in that public meeting that we had up in Weber with the two counties together, and I was able to answer that question for her. And so, yeah, definitely, I very much enjoy the citizen engagement and answering questions or, or finding solutions and answers the very best that I can to help you. You have a very special city. And I guess every city is unique, but you're, you're right there on that border and you're right there where the canyon goes up into beautiful spaces. And you're right there for some amazing active transportation. And, and you have so many people who care deeply about your community. It's, it's very obvious. So any way that I can support you? And I can stay. I don't know. Are you, you're probably having some normal city business, right? I could, if I, if we were all able to be in person, I could just listen and watch, and I still can.
You're more than welcome to listen in, so, and you can comment even if you'd like, so. All right, well, we appreciate. That's great. All right. Well, thanks so much for coming, Lorraine.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I see a hand raised.
Oh, who is it?
Barry.
Barry, go ahead. I think you're muted, Barry.
You're muted, Barry.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I had a question for the commissioner. I know that recently Chris Sanford retired, the library director. I was just wondering if there has been a new library director appointed yet?
Yes, great question. Yeah, that, the library is a little different as a department because there is a board that also governs the library. And so there's quite a cool process that goes when there's a new director that needs to be appointed. And there was a, a big recruitment, an external recruitment that included internal candidates, so everyone, there were over seventy people who applied. And then there were rounds of interviews that included the board and also included other administrative officers. And in the end, an internal candidate won the offer and his name is Josh Johnson, so you probably know him, Barry, right?
Yes, I do. Yes.
So Josh Johnson was one of the deputy directors and he started officially on December the first. And it's, it's going great. He loves it. He's doing a great job. And it's been hard in the pandemic with libraries. Currently, they're appointment only, but they still can have the same number of people in there. It's just that people need to set that up in advance rather than walking in. So, but, but the nice thing is that the Davis County libraries, except for that month of April, they have stayed open. And so not all the libraries have been able to stay open, but they've arranged it with the guidelines and been able to stay open. And they've literally had some people after the closure time come back to the library and say with kind of tears in their eyes, how grateful they are that at least the libraries are back open because it helps them so much to get through the pandemic.
Yeah, I was one of those. I really appreciate that, yeah.
You look great, Barry. That was a great question. Thanks for asking that.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you, Lorraine. We will move on with the rest of our agenda now. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Petty, and then we'll have a prayer by Councilman Soderquist.
Please stand and repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag
The flag.
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most gracious Father and heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to meet as a city council and mayor city staff this evening for a city council meeting. I'm grateful for the technology that allows us to meet and carry on and move forward. Grateful for all those who are working to keep us safe and trying to fight the coronavirus and other associated things with it. We're grateful that a vaccine is coming forward and we pray that people that are affected now and struggling with COVID can regain health and strength soon and fully. We pray for their blessings tonight as we discuss the items before us, that we'll be able to communicate effectively and understand the various positions and opportunities that are before us. So grateful for all the good people in the city that take care of needs and responsibilities that are here. We're grateful for our citizens for their input. Grateful for the city staff and their execution of the different things that need to take place. Again, we ask for their guidance now as we meet and as we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Petty and Councilman Soderquist. Next on our agenda is the coronavirus update. We have, we had a twelve percent decrease in the last week in Davis County, but South Weaver City is actually up. We had, we have fifty-two active cases right now with three hundred and forty-nine cases overall that we're aware of. There were twenty-five hospitalized last week, which is a bit down from the week before, and we had three deaths in Davis County last week. The statewide ICU is at ninety percent capacity and thirty-nine percent of that is COVID related. On a positive note, like Quinn Soderquist said, we are really close to a vaccine rollout. So vaccines are arriving at COVID hospitals right now. January first, they'll begin with healthcare workers and then they'll go to long-term care patients and teachers, educators. And then February or March, they will begin to vaccinate those sixty-five and older and high-risk individuals. And so there's a light at the end of the tunnel. It looks like things are, are looking up. And I'm excited to, to start the new year on a positive note. So, um, next on our, on our agenda is public comment. Dave, do we have anyone signed up for that?
We do have one person signed up, but I do not see him logged in.
I, I received a text from Trevor Skank that he said he may not get into service where he can get to his public comment, just so you know.
Okay. So if, if he is able to come on, we, we can have him join later in the meeting if he can get service. So also, Lorraine, I don't know if she's still here, but we have a request to get your contact information posted in the minutes. So Dave, if you have that, could you do that? Or Lorraine?
Yeah, I am here and I will put that in the minutes. I mean, in the chat so that you can all have it.
Awesome. Thank you.
I will give you, I will give you my cellphone and also the office phone. And with cell, I'm, I'm especially good with text. Because if I'm in the middle of a meeting and can't answer the call, then I can at least text and let you know, right? And then also my county email. I'll put it all there.
Great. And Lorraine is very responsive, so. She's great. All right, then if we have no other public comments, let's go to our next item, which is the recognition of our city planner, Barry Burton. I want to say a couple things and then I will let Dave Larson speak for just a minute and then Barry at the end, if you would. So Barry Burton has desired, decided. uh Barry at the end, if you would. So Barry Burton has desire decided to fully retire at the end of 2020. And I want to talk a little bit about him. He was assigned by Davis County to the city of South Weaver as part of an interlocal agreement over thirty years ago, and he has been working for us ever since. When Barry first started to work here, there were twenty-five hundred residents. We now have around eight thousand. We had South Weaver Drive and nineteen hundred East, but beyond that, there was very little. Barry started with nearly a blank canvas, and what South Weaver City is today is largely the result of a lifetime of work from Barry and various others along the way. It's been my pleasure to work with Barry for the past five years. I've found him to be very accommodating and receptive to staff and council's needs. He's always been quick to answer my questions and give information. He's also a great artist and was generous enough to allow me a few of his paintings to hang in my office at City Hall. I appreciate that. Two years ago, he retired from Davis County. And that was a concern for our city as we were in the middle of multiple big projects and Barry could not contract with another entity for six months after retiring. But because he did not want to leave us in a in a hard spot, Barry agreed to work for South Weaver City for at least five months without pay. And since that time, has served as a contract employee with the city. And we're very grateful for that, Barry. Last year, I went with Barry and a couple of other people to work with the landowner on acquiring a transportation easement for the county. This particular property owner informed us in no uncertain terms that he didn't know any of us pointing to everyone but Barry and therefore didn't trust us. He then said, but I know Barry. He is a good man and I trust him. It was because of Barry that we were able to have a productive conversation. Barry has been fundamental in the recent update of the general plan and has assisted code rewrite on land use issues. His institutional knowledge has been invaluable and he will be greatly missed. So appreciate you, Barry, and all you've done for the city. And now I'll turn the time over to Dave to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been my pleasure to work with Barry uh for the last uh almost three years. And one of the first things that I did when I uh started here in South Weaver City was go to Barry's office and meet with him and get to know him a little bit. And it was evident from the very beginning that he had an incredible knowledge and expertise in planning. But above and beyond that, he had a personality that made him easy to work with. He's able to answer questions for developers, for residents, for property owners, for anybody that has approached him with uh an incredibly professional demeanor and has always uh done well for this city and how he handles himself and how he presents himself. As a city staff, we we will miss working with Barry. We're excited about uh who we have selected and interviewed and and look forward to that. But there's no way that uh all that Barry has done and all that he knows and can remain. That there's just no way that that institutional knowledge can be transferred. And we will miss him. And uh it has been my pleasure to work with him and work closely with him in the last few years. There are very few city planners that uh are as good as Barry Burton and uh we will miss him.
Thanks, Dave. I guess that's my turn.
Yep.
Um this is kind of hard. I have uh it's been a long career for me. I've been a planner for forty-one years now. And during that time, I've been a planner for numerous uh several other cities in Davis County. But none uh have I spent the kind of time with that that I have with South Weaver City. It has always been I I guess something that's very satisfactory to me to be able to work with cities and I feel like I've had a positive impact on those communities. And uh because I've been with South Weaver so long, I I hope that that impact has been more positive for South Weaver. I will always, I I've expressed this before, but I I feel as if South Weaver is more my community than the one I live in just because I know more about it. I know more people. I have more friends there, I think, than I do here where I live. But uh it it has been a wonderful association. The the greatest thing about it has been the people that I've been able to work with over the years. And that's been quite a few, quite a few mayors and city councils and and city managers and um I think you've got probably th- the best situation right now that you've ever had in the city. I've really been really appreciated working with the with everyone this past few years has been great. Um not that it wasn't great before, but it's been even even better just the last three or four years. I I hope that uh you don't all forget me. When uh when the RV park opens or other good, great things happen there, I'd I'd love to be involved just because it's been, you know, South Weaver's got a part of my heart. Uh I also wanted to say that I I know that I've got a lot of institutional knowledge and that's kind of thing that's impossible to pass on and I'm not moving anywhere. I'll always be available by phone or by email and and I'd be happy to share what I can with you guys, no no matter when it is. So thank you for giving me the opportunity of working with South Weaver for the past thirty, I think it's thirty-four years.
Wow. Well, we really appreciate you, Barry, and all you've done. And and you're welcome to move here if you'd like. I think there's very few people that know South Weaver as well as you do. Although there have been some really longtime residents, so um but we appreciate you. Um you know, I I'm just gonna do an open mic for two minutes. If anyone else ha- has any comments, um just speak up.
Tim waved bye, but uh we do appreciate you. We really do, and we will miss your knowledge of the background. It is hard to replace the history and knowing how things have come along. So we do appreciate that and I'm sure we'll be in touch. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Um if I could, if that's okay, I I just want to echo the same comments that so far everyone everybody's spoken about Barry. Barry, I consider a actually a good friend. Um I guess I've only known Barry for what, twenty-two years? So it's just the short term of your career, but uh it's been absolutely awesome. Barry's really a uh an inspiration and uh I admire his work ethic and I admire everything that he's done for the city and and everything he's done for me as a a friend and and I really, really appreciate him and definitely will miss him and I I hope um actually, he'll put his contact information. So I have a his new email and uh and and phone or whatever we need so we can get ahold of him for when I need to be coached on uh different things in my life. So I appreciate that. And I even knew Barry for a little while when he had no mustache, you know, so it's kind of fun.
Thanks, Tim. That wasn't very long when I didn't have a mustache.
No, just a five-year term.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I I will put my email in the in the chat here, my personal email. You guys have my phone number. It's not going to change.
All right. Thank you. Uh Brandon, do you have words to say?
Well, I just want to take a, I mean, I would feel really bad if I didn't say anything because Barry is a super good friend of of mine. I have grown to to love Barry as a person over the years. I I I was trying to think, I think I have been working with Barry for about fifteen years. So not very long, but in that short period of time, uh I I just have really grown to respect Barry a lot. I think he's he's a very honest and fair and and good person and um anyway, it's gonna be hard to I I'm gonna give all my respect to his replacement, but it's gonna be hard to to uh replace what he is and has been for the city. And the one thing I'll say too about Barry is that, I mean, he said it, but he loves South Weaver. He loves South Weaver deeply and I think he's he's done his very best on every front to do what he, you know, feels, give the guidance that that is hopefully there to to help South Weaver be the best it can be. Anyway, thank you, Barry.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
Barry, it's been seven years. We've had a chance to work together. You've taught me more than uh I actually thought I knew about planning. Uh appreciate you. And like I always say, serve until replaced. So you're still on the clock.
All right. I think you got a contract on the on the agenda pretty soon, so that's not very long.
Well, we might table it for another month or so just to keep you around. Just kidding.
I'll just say, Barry, you'll be missed. We're working on the code committee. I can see your uh your experience coming in and oftentimes you're like, well, you need you need to consider this, you know, and just all that experience that you've gained over the last thirty years of doing this, you can really see that um there's a there's a lot of knowledge that we're losing here. So you'll be you'll be missed.
Thanks.
I want to say thanks, Barry. You've been fantastic to work with and a great asset to the city. And uh my father-in-law says, as a former mayor, he wants me to pass on congratulations to your retirement and thank you.
Tell him thanks for that.
I sure will.
Quinn, I see you're unmuted.
Yeah, I'm I'm the new guy. I know Barry probably the least of anybody here, but I've gained a lot of respect. When I first came in, I really didn't know what he did and you know, I've learned that he does a lot and has a wealth of great knowledge. So I just echo what everybody else has already testified to. We appreciate your support and help with our city.
Thanks, Quinn.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And and thank you so much, Barry. We have a plaque and a small token of our appreciation and card to give to you and we'll have to do that when we see you in person, but uh appreciate all that you've done for the city and and wish you the very best in your future endeavors, whatever they may be.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, um I I I will leave our public comments here, but uh let's go ahead and just uh go through the consent agenda approval. The consent agenda consists of the November tenth and the November seventeenth, December first meeting minutes, as well as the November check register and the October budget to actual. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, then do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment? Then we'll have a real call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petty.
Aye.
Councilman Soderquist.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alberts.
Aye.
And Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Um Dave, would this be an opportune time to do our public comment?
Yes, but it looks like he has dropped off the call.
Oh, he dropped off again. Okay, well, then we'll go on and come back. Um let's see. Item number nine on our agenda is the conditional use permit twenty sixteen dash zero five Elite Training Center at one twenty-eight East South River Drive. City council reviewed and approved amendments to the conditional use permit sixteen dash zero five on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, with the understanding that the facility owner Kelly Park would research the cost associated with the conditions discussed and then provide city council with a response. Kelly completed his research and a CUP working group was established to review and discuss his findings. The group consisting of Councilwoman Alberts, Councilman Halverson, City Manager Dave Larson, Facility Owner Carol Kelly Park, and I met on November thirtieth, twenty twenty. The result of this work is presented to the city council for consideration in the form of an updated CUP sixteen dash zero five. The material adjustments to the CUP are as follows: indoor filled activities to end at ten thirty PM, a minimum six-foot chain link fence with wire on top to run the length of the east side of the property, a mature tree landscaping required to provide a visual noise and soccer ball buffer for residents. Are there comments or questions on the updated CUP?
Mayor, I've got two of them. Um first of all, just a question on the um six-foot chain link fence with a wire on top. Is that indicating a barbed wire or what what's the definition of a wire on top? Electrical, barbed, or it's just a wire?
I believe it would be barbed wire, lines of barbed wire. Am I correct?
That's how I understood it.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if that needs to be spelled out or if it's just left as is anyway.
It probably should be spelled out. The more specific we can get, the better.
I agree.
Uh my question on that would be, uh and I I wish our public comment was here for this, is that um visually acceptable for him? I I don't, I'm trying to figure out how to best mitigate this, but I don't know how I would feel about having a barbed wire across the back of my yard like that. Has have we, is everybody our code commi- not code committee, our CUP committee reviewed this. Is everybody feeling okay with that?
Blair, I know you spoke with the resident.
Yeah, and I and uh I believe Trevor said he was having trouble getting back into the the Zoom meeting for some reason. But uh I didn't I didn't get a real clear response on that because I know the chain, the the chain link will go up to the level of the current uh vinyl fence and then you would see the um and maybe Kelly can respond to this, but you would see the barbed wire above that fence. And so the only way you wouldn't is maybe along that stretch is if it angled, you know how you see the barbed wire that angles? If it angled back to the soccer complex through that stretch and then the rest of the way just go straight up, then it wouldn't uh be necessarily be seen over the top of his fence like it would if it was just the straight up. So anyway, uh he he said Zoom is trying to make him buy a monthly subscription. So anyway, um but uh that's that's kind of what my opinion was. And I don't know if Kelly wants to speak up if that's doable. I think maybe would that would be a better, I again, I I agree. But the point of this is to keep people from trespassing into the neighbor's yards. And a chain link fence by itself doesn't necessarily do that. It almost makes it easier to jump over something than a vinyl fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, I
All right, go ahead, Kelly.
All right, I'm happy to address that if you want. Um yeah, they can do it either straight up or it can be angled either direction towards our facility along him would be fine if, I mean, I'm it's still gonna be taller than the six-foot vinyl fence, so I I still see it, but it wouldn't be probably as as obvious if it was tilted towards us, which is no problem at all. And then the rest of the way, I planned on going just straight up.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, other questions? Quinn, did you have others?
Yeah, I just had one other one. Um item eight in the CUP says, you know, talks about noise and it needs to comply with the noise restriction. You know, that exists. Is that only that exists now or if we update our noise restrictions, will it carry forward? Because it just says the noise restrictions. That's page eighty-eight.
That's a good question. Uh Dave or Mary or Jamie?
I can answer legally the way it would work and then maybe um those who were involved in the discussions can talk about what was intended. Uh legally, I you can't impose a requirement that would be Uh, legally, I, you can't impose a requirement that would be changed in the future. So whatever the code is that exists right now is the code that would apply, uh, under this paragraph. You wouldn't look forward, you'd look backwards.
Thank you.
And that, that was the intent, I think. So whether we have a good one or not, that's another subject.
Those are the questions I had at this point. Thank you.
And I don't, I don't know if anybody needs a further recap, but I, um, I think the mature trees and the way they're spaced in the, the, uh, what do you want to call it? The attachment that Brandon did in the plan, uh, really helped with the sound and the noise. And, uh, it's, it's definitely, Kelly, I don't know how hard it is to find a 12 foot tree, but I, I, that is a big tree to start with. So, and that is, that is what we're expecting to see if that's the way we do it. So.
Hey Blair, just as a point of order, we lost the mayor. So I think as pro 10, you need to run this meeting until she goes back.
I, I hadn't even noticed that she was gone. So.
We won't tell her.
We, we won't, we won't tell her.
That you, no, we won't tell her you said that.
So I don't know, Dave, we, I believe I can see Trevor. Do we want to, and I'll turn that maybe to the council. Are we okay if Trevor takes a moment to give his public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let you go ahead and do that if you can hear us, Trevor.
I think you're muted, Trevor.
You, you're muted. There you go.
All right. I'm sorry. I just tuned in, so I'm not privy to what has been discussed yet, but. So I met with Blair last night. He kind of discussed what was going to be happening. Uh, hey, he, he had mentioned that the, they had said that a concrete barrier was going to cost around $240,000. When I heard that number, uh, my jaw dropped because that's not in the realm of reality. I happen to work with quite a few people who do structures like that. And I made one call after I spoke with Blair and he discussed how the, uh, the trees would, uh, provide somewhat of a buffer. But on pine trees, you know, you, you've got a sound buffer that's, that would probably work really well within the first eight feet or so. But once you go above that, you, you get absolutely nothing. So after I spoke with Blair, I told him I was going to make a call and I, I called somebody who does, uh, concrete fences. And got some pricing from him. He can't do over a 10 foot fence, but on the 10 foot fence, he's about a hundred dollars a foot. And on the eight foot fence, I think he was like around $65 a foot. If you add that all up, it, I, it's roughly around, I don't know, between 45,000, $50,000, somewhere in that range. Now, to make that 12 foot variance on that sound buffer would simply require just a, a two foot mound or a, a shoulder for that fence to sit on. And, and if we really want to address the problem, which, which is the sound, then that's the route that we need to do to go. The, the trees, the, the trees really aren't going to provide any kind of a, they might, they might damper the sound just a little bit, but it, it, it's, it's not going after the problem. And the, the problem is, is the sound coming from, from the complex. And, you know, if you sit back and you think about it, you know, when this thing was being developed, they knew they had to have the vegetation buffer around the whole complex. And when, and when the city planner decided to omit that, you know, that was, that was a savings of easily over 150, $160,000 that it was just a free gift to them. So, you know, when you're talking penny dollars for apples for apples, I mean, having them do something like this is, is not out of the realm of possibilities. I, we're, we're dealing with a lot of frustration down here. And every time they say they're going to do something, we have problems with it. We have problems with it. We need to have something that in concrete, solidify it and, and get this thing taken care of. And I do appreciate the time that you're all taking on addressing this. And I, I know it's a complicated issue, but that's where I stand. It, it, it needs to be something that's actually going to combat the sound coming from the complex.
Are we, is the mayor back?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm on my phone. I, my internet dropped. So I apologize. Um, thank you, Trevor, for your comments. I, I cannot see hands raised or other participants. And so it might, for, for the sake of dialogue, be good to have someone, um, someone else having the speaker speak if their hands are raised. So maybe Blair, if you could, um, go ahead and I will just introduce the new items and et cetera.
Well, and I'm on my iPad, so I don't get to see that very well either. But so Dave, you're up. So if there's others that need to speak, that'd be fine. So. Okay. We can keep discussing the CUP.
If you want to make a comment, council just pipe up.
Brandon, I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to pick on you a little bit. I, I mean, after I had that, I had the opportunity to talk to Trevor last night and I did get his email about the cost per lineal foot. And then, and Trevor, I'm not, I'm not saying, so I, I don't know what type of wall that is. I looked at it. I, I could tell. Um, but Brandon, do you want to kind of give us a relay? I asked Brandon to go see what it would cost for more of like the, what it would take to do an actual something considered a sound wall? Whether that's 10 feet, 12 feet, whatever that is. I mean, do you want to give the recap of what you found today?
Uh, sure. I, I appreciate that. And again, I don't, Trevor, I don't, I have no idea who you talked to. I, and I'm, I'm, I'm just talking to, um, the Olympus precast is who I talked to. And, uh, they're just, they're just someone that I'm familiar with. Um, they, of course, this, this isn't a direct, you know, bid price necessarily. But the information that he relayed to me is that, that you're somewhere between 225 to 250 a foot for a 10 foot, um, fence. Just the additional reinforcement needed, the, the foundation. And of course, that's the design that they're going with. So, you know, uh, without looking into it any, any deeper, that, that's kind of the, the rough cost that I was able to get. The, the length of the fence that I think we were talking about. Um, and of course I wasn't involved in the committee, so I might be off here, but I think was around, it's around about 250 feet. So at 250, you're at about what $63,000 for that, that section. Now, is it possible that there's, maybe there's something somewhere else that, that is cheaper than that? That's just, that's just what I came up with, with my research. Does that answer your question, Blair?
It does. And that's what I just needed to, because I'm not familiar with it. Everything I found was, it, it, everything on the internet ranges from where Trevor was at to astronomical prices. So I, I was going back and forth. So to try to come up with what was, what a true number was.
And this is a, this is a solid masonry concrete, you know, fence. Um, some, I know there's some fences out there that have kind of a hollow core that are still kind of considered masonry. So it, you know, there's a lot of fences. It would be, um, so what I'm looking at, the number that I got, I think is probably more on the higher end. Beefier, more of a sound wall type fence.
Do you, do you have an opinion on what it takes for a sound to, that's actually something that's going to provide a sound barrier?
Well, I mean, my, my, this, this is, uh, not really an educated opinion necessarily, just with the, the little experience I've, I've had in working with you on, on a few things related to sound walls. Um, of course, I, I didn't do any of the research necessarily, but just based on kind of how they handle the situation. Um, I think the noise you're talking about here is, it's hard to compare because it's a different kind of noise, highway noise. Of course, I, I guess it's all decibels, but um, you know, whistles and things like that are, are higher pitched. Um, you know, I, I, I think hard to compare the two. So, um, whether, uh, leaving the existing vinyl fence with the chain link fence and, and wire on top versus a 10 foot concrete fence, um, is going to make a measurable distance difference in noise. I think you'd have to, I mean, if you really wanted to know, you'd have to study it. You'd, you'd have to do some kind of test. I think otherwise it's, it's difficult to know for sure the difference that the two, the difference between the two and whether or not that additional provides, um, enough that it makes it worth it.
True.
For, for what it's worth, I do think the trees over time, maybe not initially as much, but I do think over time, trees are, I believe would be likely to, to provide more of that. And especially as they grow larger, um, would only just help over time. Where the, the, you know, fence will just give you whatever it gives you on day one and, and it, it won't improve over time. But the trees could possibly improve things over time. Just my opinion.
Mayor Haley's hand is raised.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just was wondering, Kelly, in our meeting that we had together, you talked that you were going to go look at some trees and kind of see what options were available to you. Did you have a chance to do that? And, and see the heights that they would be and the maturity height and breadth that they would be?
You know, right in the middle of, right as you started talking, I lost connection. Sorry. Can you say that again?
That's okay. I think, I think everyone's having a little bit of issues tonight. Um, I was just wondering, in our meeting, we, we discussed the trees and you were going to look into different types of trees available, um, as far as how, starting off at the 12 feet that Blair mentioned, and then there, how high they will get as well as their breadth that they will go out. Did you get a chance to do that?
Uh, yeah, actually I talked to Chris Trimmie quite a bit about that too. Um, and I think that layout that he has, they were basically 25 foot apart, if I remember correctly. And that is kind of, I mean, that should fill in. So it has a pine tree and then a, I guess a deciduous tree in between. Um, so that as those trees are growing in, the deciduous trees will fill in, in the meantime. But yeah, according to Chris, it's not too tough. Someone mentioned earlier how hard it is to find 12 foot trees. He's telling me it's not too hard. They're not cheap, but you can find them. So. Does that answer?
I was just wondering if you were able to research that the, the type of trees and how big will they get with the type of trees you're looking at or thinking of?
Uh, what we were looking at mostly was like spruce trees. So, yeah, like, I, I mean, they get, they get large. They get 40, 50 feet tall, um, at, at maturity. But yeah, if we start with 12 footers, they're a pretty good size tree.
And on the deciduous trees, did you get any research on those?
Uh, you know, we did. I don't remember exactly what ones, we narrowed it down to four or five. I don't remember what they were, to be honest with you. I'm not a tree guy, but, um, I mean, they, they get, they're canopy trees as well. So they get large.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I believe in our packet and Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but the updated, um, distance between the tweet, trees was a 25 feet between each deciduous tree and then, um, staggered in between those were the, the conifers. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah. So, so if you're just going, so it's, it's two, it would be two rows of trees, you know, deciduous in the back, closest to the fence and evergreens in the front, um, and then offset. So if you're just looking straight on, then the, the spacing between each tree, it would be what 12 and a half?
Thank you. And I believe the, I shouldn't say conifer, uh, the pine trees, uh, would be the closest to the soccer complex and the, the canopy trees behind, um, which pine trees, uh, would discourage spectators from sitting under them, at least for a long time. They wouldn't be, they're, they're not as comfortable to go and, and lounge under. So is that correct, Brandon?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think you, people are, are more apt to, to be underneath the, the deciduous trees, you know, for shade or whatnot. This, the, the way that the drawing was put together would, would discourage that, um, I believe. It would, it would probably encourage the spectators to be closer to the field and not as close to the fence.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Um, because I was part of the, the committee discussion and some of the things that, uh, we reviewed. And although noise dampening is, is an element of what the trees provide, I think more than that, the combination of the trees and the wire with the chain link fence really was to get at two other things. And that, that was trespassing and the visual buffer. The, the trespassing idea, I think is twofold. One is that, uh, there were people parking on the neighborhood street and then crossing the property to get to the soccer complex. And then the other was when soccer balls were going over the fence, that the, uh, patrons would be hopping the fence into uh, private property in order to retrieve the balls. And the idea behind the combination of the fence and the trees was that it would attack both of those ideas even more than the noise, that the noise dampening might be, might be there a little bit because of the trees, but mostly it was to discourage or at least catch soccer balls so that they don't go across the, the property line. But then having the fence all the way down with the chain link was to make it so there's no, there's no real incentive. There's no real method. There's no path from the neighborhood to get into the property as well. One of the problems right now is that, uh, there's vinyl fence to a point and then there's, then there's a small wire fence chain, not a true chain link, but just a wire fence, the remainder of the length of the property line, where people are going around the vinyl in order to get to, to the property to retrieve soccer balls and whatnot, or at least crossing over there. Where having the length of it be all chain link would make it so the trespassing issue is really the one that, that we would tackle with the chain link and the wire on top. At least that was the discussion that the committee had is that, um, the, the noise was secondary to those other issues, um, with the, the chain link and the trees.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Other comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. It looks like mayor's frozen, so I'm going to go ahead and go.
Wayne, go ahead.
All right. Uh, I got an observation and maybe a question for Kelly. And looking at the drawing that shows the arrangement of the trees and the, uh, Google image that shows the footprint of the existing field. It appears that the edge of the field currently is showing about 15 feet off the common property line. Given the placement of the trees being 30 feet. Given the placement of the trees being 30 feet off the property line. I'm suspect, I'm suspecting that Kelly's going to reline his field another 15 feet away from the closest trees. Putting it approximately 45 feet off the property line. Can, can I get a confirmation of that?
I, I can address that.
50 feet off the property line.
Yeah.
So even more. So having, having the field set further away in addition to the trees is going to only. Improve, it won't solve all the noise, because noise is going to carry no matter what we put there. It's going to improve the. At least the balls being carried over the fence from that perspective, as well as get the noise whistles further away than they currently are. Is that a correct assessment?
Yeah, we're 50 feet from the property line.
Thank you.
Wayne, am, am I understanding the question correctly that? By planting the trees, it will necessitate moving the field, because I don't believe that's the case. The field currently is 50 feet. Off of the property line, and so I don't believe there's a plan to move the field farther than where it is currently.
My observation, looking at the drawing in our packet, shows the benches that the teams sit on, less than five feet off the property line and the chalk line being about 15 feet off, so. Whenever that field was planned, placed there, it was not placed 50 feet off the property line at that time. It might be 50 feet today. And the trees would, would not be in an impact to the field if it is 50 feet away. That's what I was trying to get at.
And that is correct, yes.
Yeah, you are correct, man. That, that moved last summer, just so you know. And, and maybe this is a quick question, and I hadn't thought about it, it was brought up to me before. At, at one time when the soccer complex started, Kelly. I, I mean, neighbors have said that whistles weren't used. Is, is that even, is that an option to play? I mean, that we don't have whistles on that east field?
I, I've never heard of the soccer game not having a referee with a whistle. I don't know that that's really an option.
I just, I just have had, I've had three people now tell me that with the first summer that when we started that. The first while there weren't whistles, that's why I was asking the question, so that's why. I'm asking.
Well, my issue, Blair, is not so much the referee's whistle, that's common with a game. It's the spectator noise, cowbells, other celebratory noise makers when somebody squares a goal. How do we control and/or eliminate that aspect to, to help the neighborhood who are being inconvenienced with the, the noise aspect? Is, is there rules that can be put in place by the club that eliminates the noise makers for, for the teams? Things of that nature. That's what I'm interested in finding out.
Kelly, would you?
Technically, a, any type of noise makers is actually illegal at any soccer game. I know you see the World Cup and they have their zuzu volleys and all that fun stuff in the stands, but. Any artificial noise makers at the, at the sideline will be the referee. Facility though.
I think I caught that, but yeah, appreciate that.
Other comments?
Haley's got her hand raised.
Haley.
I just, I just wanted to check as far as the code, if these trees are die, die or aren't taken care of. There is the ability to enforce that through citations. Am I understanding that correctly?
Should be right, Dave.
That's how I understand it.
Yes, the idea of the CUP is written is that that's the number of trees. That we're identifying, but more than the number, we're identifying the, the length that needs to be mitigated. Where that landscaping needs to, to provide the protection. And so if, if trees are dying and they're not doing what is. What the purpose is, then yes, that's exactly the type of enforcement that can happen, based on how the CUP is written with the exhibits the way they are. Quinn's hand is raised.
Yes, Councilman Sotekis.
Just a, a quick question is, is the plan, assuming that we have to have a wall, then there would be no trees, is that correct? And that would have the possibility of balls being kicked much closer to the fence and over the fence more often? Is that, is that the discussion? It's trees or fence, is that correct?
That was, that was, that was the discussion originally, and that was the, I think, one of the discussions with the neighbor. But, I mean, when, when you start combining the issues and then asking, and when, when we're trying to mitigate something and to meet our code. And those requirements, that's where we came back to where we're at now.
To me, it, it seems like the trees offer a little bit more buffer for. You know, balls going over and. The trespassing aspect of trying to retrieve balls.
Thank you, Quinn. Councilwoman Petty.
So, um, I think fair to say for everyone that this has been kind of a, a tough one. But I feel like the trespassing and the sound and. Keeping with the fence and the trees, I feel like the, this committee, this CUP committee has done a pretty good job at mitigating those, so. It's been a hard decision, but I feel pretty good about this. If they can do the chain link. At an angle on the property line near the neighbor, and then if they want to take it straight up the rest of the way. Or angled the whole way, however, it would be easier, but as long as that visual is taken out and we have the mature trees, I feel like this would be something that we should. I feel comfortable moving forward with.
Thank you, Angie. Any other comments?
The, the only other comment I have is maybe more for when this, on the, on the, on the maps that have the signage on them. The S2 no parking sign along the south, would that be the southwest side of South Weaver Drive? I think Haley may have pointed this out, there's. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven signs down and along that stretch. That seems very. Excessive that maybe the Fritls and Berts don't want that many signs along their frontage. We probably ought to just look at that and maybe pick a few different spots. That seems. A little, Brandon smiled when I said that, but it does seem like a lot of signs to be in front of anyone's property. And we may, I think they can get the point with maybe half of those. But I, I would, I would leave that to the discretion of when they go to get put in, so I wouldn't change that.
If I might, I'll just comment on the, on all of the exhibits that. The direction I was given to just to put these together was so that we would have something specific, so that. There wasn't anything left to interpretation, you know, that it would, it would have the, you know, exact locations, numbers or whatnot. I, I don't have an opinion on that, so whatever, whatever you feel, whatever the council feels is the appropriate number. We can adjust the exhibits however you see as best.
So do we not need signs along Raymond Drive as far as no parking? We're assuming the fence is going to. Be a deterrent. Somebody that comes in doesn't know, obviously they're going to all try to park in the soccer facility, but. Do we need at least a couple or on Raymond Drive?
Well, we do have, the S1 signs are no parking beyond this point. And so we put those at the end, you know, coming off of South Weaver Drive. Coming from Silver Oak Lane and going down Raymond Drive, just the idea was nothing past this point, so. Rather than lining the entire street with no parking signs, we were hoping that those would cover that aspect. Again, if you feel differently, then we can adjust this drawing however you want.
Will they be large enough for people to easily see?
And that would be the intent, yes.
Okay.
They're, they're custom signs, so we will, we'll make them as large as necessary to make sure that. The message is sent.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Then do I have a, a motion to approve the CUP 2016 dash zero five?
Mayor, I, I just want to make a comment before.
You bet.
I was on this committee and, and so I thought that we had a really great thing. I'm, I'm having some internal struggle here and I have been for the last 24 hours trying to decide. I understand. The barbed wire, I, I don't know that I would want barbed wire in my backyard over my fence, but I do understand that. Based off what the committee was trying to solve is they brought up, you know, trying to stop. The trespassing and trying to stop things going over the field. I think that if we're gonna, this, this gets passed, I think I would like to hear Trevor's thoughts on having barbed wire in his backyard. If we want to remove that portion just where his backyard is and then keep it along the other areas to keep the trespassers out. You know, from the masonry wall, you know, speaking with Kelly and, and going over those numbers and going over different schematics of that. Is, is, is hard, because I, I understand Trevor's point of view of wanting to have that masonry wall. I understand. Kelly's point of view of wanting to have a, a reasonable barrier between his property and residential and. While at this time we do have that in our code to have that barrier be masonry between those two. This one's obviously a different category. With the fence, we're able to get that whole east side, so that even goes in past Raymond Drive, which right now. You know, as we saw in that big soccer game or tournament that happened, people were just going around the fence and, and eventually just parking there. This would allow to fence off that whole area. Keeping the vinyl fence with the chain link, I believe we put said like four to six inches to the west of the vinyl fence. I think, you know, Kelly had talked about. The vinyl fence breaking, Trevor's had problems with the vinyl fence breaking. I feel like that adds a protective barrier. Whilst keeping Trevor's side looking more aesthetically pleasing than just doing just the chain link fence. Being able to put up that berm, the extra two feet and then do the masonry wall. I, I, I'm not quite sure how to transition that masonry wall from just behind. Trevor's backyard and then going back to a chain link fence with barbed wire, how, how to make that balance. I'm really trying to put this in as the way that I would want it in my backyard, as well as thinking of what's best for, for both property owners and. I think aesthetically pleasing would be those trees. I do think that they will block out more sound and noise with time, just because they will be so much bigger. And at this point, it's, it's really one or the other. You know, some of the trees, I was just, just down South Weaver Drive, some of those blue spruces are, are. Quite large, like even at the 20 feet, their breadth is still, you know, a good 10 feet or more. So I, I think that that would provide a better buffer, especially with the way that we have the. The, the evergreens up against the fence and, or the deciduous trees up against the fence and then the evergreens back. That was also a hope that we would be able to keep it blocked out all year long and not just in the summer when they have leaves. So there were, there was a lot of, of due diligence that went in here, a lot of careful thought going to both parties. And to the city as a whole. This is not an easy one for me. I'm having a bit of an internal struggle, like I mentioned, but I do feel. That at the end of the day, given what we're able to do, that. This will be a good compromise. Kelly, you know, I, I know we have. The ability to cite, cite you if these trees are not well taken care of, and I, I hope that this is something that. You, you can go forward in good faith that this will get done and those trees will be taken care of and. You know, a, all of these things, I think we, we tried to make sure to keep, you know, the parking lot, he's not able to do any outdoor games. Until he finishes the parking lot and paves and paints it. So, and hopefully I, I do hope with the signs throughout the area. Will help mitigate the traffic that's going on, so. I just wanted to add to the record that this, this has had a lot of my, my attention, a lot of my energy, and I know Blair and Dave's and Joe's as well. And so I, I really am hoping that this will be a, a solution that will work and prove beneficial for the years to come.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alberts. Any other comments?
So just for clarification, Haley, you're saying remove the barbed wire. On the property line behind Trevor's house, if that's what he's wanting. I don't love the barbed wire idea either, but if the trees will provide a barrier for people trespassing or for balls. That might satisfy that requirement on his property line. But if the barbed wire can be placed so it's not seen from Trevor's house, then it would be beneficial to both parties, right? If we can do that without being seen.
Yeah, so with the vinyl fence staying, there is a good chance that he won't see that barbed wire if it is tilted, but. You know, I would like to hear his perspective on that personally.
Is that a stipulation we can put in the motion then? Because I. Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you would be willing to not put the barbed wire across the owner's property if he is adverse to it.
Yeah, it kind of defeats the purpose of the barbed wire. I mean, it's keeping people on our side of the fence, but if, if he doesn't want it there, I'm fine with it. I, then there's no point in putting a chain link fence along there. That's what the purpose of the chain link fence is, is to hold the barbed wire. So that no one can get over it. If we don't want to put chain link along his fence or barbed wire along his fence, then that's fine with me.
I, I think if we're trying to mitigate the. The trespassing issue. It either has to be there or it doesn't do any good, to be honest with you. That's, I mean. A chain link fence, all that did was just make it easy. If it doesn't have that, you're making it easier to climb the, the vinyl fence. And that's a reality, whether you like the fence or don't like the fence, that's a reality of it. If we are trying to meet the, stopping the trespassings. I think that has to be there. I mean, we could go up eight feet with the, a chain link fence, but a straight chain link fence is still climbable. And so I, it's. I mean, all of us have climbed a chain link fence before, so I think, I think it's pretty obvious.
Would it be possible to have like a four foot chain link with barbed wire on top? Would that do the same thing or no?
This is where I.
Is that dangerous?
Yeah, I think it presents a safety hazard and is probably an attractive nuisance where you have kids and younger folks. At the soccer facility. So I, I do think from the soccer facility side, if there is barbed wire, it needs to be visible. So that nobody scales the fence and becomes injured as a result. Needs to be something that can be seen.
The, the only change I would make was if we're, if we're, I would probably take two of those S2 signs and put them over on Raymond Drive, Brandon. And if everybody's okay with that, I would like to see that in the motion, whoever makes the motion.
Just, just one thought or, one other thought. We talked about in our meeting about maintaining the weeds between those two fence lines. I'm not seeing that in our actual CUP. Would that just fall with our regular code on landscaping, or do we need to have that added into the CUP as well?
That was part, I think that was, someone mentioned that would be part of our regular code enforcement. But we could, it could be added. It's a, it's a given if Kelly's okay with it, we could add that. Well, or if everybody wants that, we can just add that.
I think it would be beneficial to add, so we know who's responsible for that space, just to make it clear, since it's two fences.
Okay. Other comments?
So I'm with Brandon that if we have the marking of these signs here, it needs to be specific, so there's no question later on. So Blair, which ones do you want to remove? The ones furthest west?
I was thinking the ones right in front of the, I mean, it just I just thought seven was along their property line. I know the last one's not, but one, two, three, four, five, six. But I mean, I haven't driven back over there to see which ones. I would think the one down on the very we just spread them apart there.
So we could take away the one on the very furthest west that's on the gosh, I don't even know if you'd call that the south side of the street, but I guess.
Yeah, southwest. And and then and then the one right dead in front of that's that's the third, well, if you're starting from the left hand side, it'll be one, two, three, four, and that's right.
We take the one right in front of their house and then they have the people parking there. We could always put it there, right?
Yep. Yep. We can always add it. I just I just look at this going on. That's that's a lot of signs in front of your house. They already have, they're already, and no offense, Kelly, but some some man, but they're already looking at a great big metal building across the street. We don't need to add something worse to look at.
So Blair, for lack of a better description, the southwest sign would be number one and then you would remove number three.
Yep. And then just, I would just put them down because the people have made, I know with the chain link fence, it should deter that, but we've mainly had people crossing about halfway down Raymond Drive where it turns to more of dirt.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a good plan. I'm good for that.
Okay. Dave, do you have those changes then?
Yes.
And as far as the barbed wire on the chain link, are we just good to keep it the way it is? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve table or deny conditional use permit 2016 dash zero five?
Mayor, I will make a motion that we approve. If I get the number right, conditional use permit 2016 dash zero five with the changes made to the sign requirement.
And what, Blair?
I'm trying to make sure. We didn't need to put anything specific about the code for the weeds?
Yeah, add add the weed control between the fence and then we probably need to add the angle of the wire towards the soccer complex next to the residence.
All right, I'm going to start a new motion then instead of editing that. Mayor, make a motion. We approve conditional use permit 2016 dash zero five with the changes to angling the barbed wire fence on the property line next to the neighbors. Weed control between the two fences and moving the two signs as presented in council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilman Halverson. Is there any further comment? All right. Then we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petty.
Aye.
Councilman Soderquist. Councilwoman Alberts.
Aye.
And Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to item number 10, Resolution 2020 dash 49, Country Lane at South Weaver subdivision final acceptance. On November 14th, 2020, Country Lane assisted living was granted conditional acceptance. This started the one year guarantee period. The majority of the improvement associated with the subdivisions are private. Only a small section of storm drain and the curb and gutter sidewalk and asphalt widening on South Weaver Drive are public improvements. Upon request by the developer and in conjunction with public works and other city staff members as needed, a walkthrough inspection was performed on November 17th, 2020 of the improvements of the subdivision. It has been determined that all items have been completed satisfactorily to meet the minimum requirements of South Weaver City standards in accordance with the approved improvement plans. Jones and Associates recommends granting finalist acceptance. Once final acceptance has been granted, the previously held 10% guarantee amount of $14,428.29 can be released as well as any other remaining funds still left in the account. Are there comments or questions on this?
Mayor, I don't necessarily have a comment or concern about this other than that development. And this is maybe a question for Brandon. At the original planning commission level and Tim can maybe address this. I know when we when we repaved South Weaver Drive, the right hand turn lane was restriped after Tim had already had to repaint that so that there wasn't actually right hand turn lane there to turn and go north onto 475. Did we ever request you not to restripe that the way we had it laid out?
We did make that request and their response was that there was not a turn lane there before and so a turn lane wasn't painted.
So Tim, get out your paintbrush. Okay, I was wondering why because it definitely backs up right there.
It's certainly a request that we can continue to to make to you, Dot. I'm just relaying what they what their response was when we asked them about it.
Okay, thank you.
We'll put you on that, Blair. Councilwoman Alberts.
Oh, Blair, that was my question. Sorry, I forgot to put my handbag down.
You're good. Any other questions or comments? Then do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash 49?
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, Tim.
Sorry, just there's a correction on the the background. It actually, the one year period begin began November 14th, 2019.
2019, okay. Thank you.
That's why we're here today.
Right. That's right. Thank you.
Tim is correct. I apologize that that just is stated incorrectly. It's 2019.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion. Do I need to include the date change in the motion?
I don't, I think it was just a description, so it shouldn't change anything, correct? Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2020 dash 49, Country Lane at South Weaver subdivision final acceptance.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further comment? All right, then we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alberts.
Aye.
Councilman Soderquist.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petty.
Aye.
And Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you and thank you, Tim, for coming.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful facility, beautiful facility.
I appreciate that. We've we've actually been excited to be part of South Weaver City. We've gotten just great reception from the residents and and the the people that live there just absolutely love the the volunteers that have helped out and come in and done things when before COVID and and of course, at this point, we're excited to have the vaccinations coming actually soon. So the state has indicated that we should be seeing those actually really quick. So we're excited about that and and we're hopeful that as things move forward, we'll be presenting some some other amenities to go along with the assisted living nearby. So some independent living and and whatnot housing. So, thank you.
Great. Well, that's good to hear. I also wondered if on the 24th, you know, we're having the bell ringing at 6:00 PM. I don't know if if they'd be able to come out at all to hear that, but maybe not, or open windows or something. I don't know.
But you know, that's good. Yeah, we could mention that.
It'd be cool. It'd be cool to have them participate in some way or at least get to hear it, so.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that. I appreciate that. I did pick up my bells this morning.
Awesome. I did the same. Thanks. All right, thanks. All right, item number 11 is Resolution 2020 dash five zero. Agreement for Planning Services with Sherri Pippin. As stated previously, longtime city planner Barry Burton is retiring at the end of 2020. A request for proposals was launched and four proposals were received. The proposals were evaluated and a committee consisting of Councilwoman Angie Petty, Councilman Quinn Soderquist, City Manager David Larson, outgoing city planner Barry Burton and I was formed to perform interviews of the top two candidates. The committee is recommending the city enter an agreement with Sherri Pippin for planning services. Sherri comes very highly recommended from previous employers and has a key knowledge and experience that the committee was looking for. Sherri has a master's degree in public administration and approximately 12 years of planning experience with the cities of Smithville, Providence and Nibley. A few of her work history highlights include the following. Updated multiple multiple general plans and capital facility plans, wrote and edited general plan policy updates and coordinated with a consultant to incorporate adjustments, reviewed more than 2,000 requests for land use planning, including annexation, rezone, site plan and subdivision plots, developed a matrix of code requirements to assess approximately 100 pod projects, highlight potential violation areas and provide suggestions to help projects comply with zoning requirements prior to final submission, analyze city growth patterns to identify potential connector roads and preserve agricultural land as required, analyze the city code to identify outdated ordinances not compliant with Utah state law and investigated process accuracy depicted in the code to suggest pertinent adjustments, wrote new city ordinances by analyzing the general plan, researching ordinances from other cities and drafting new ordinances that incorporated general plan priorities updates in formal writing. Are there comments or questions?
I just had a question. Just about her. Do you know where she's from? Where she lives?
Currently, she lives in Logan or in Cache Valley at least, and she is in the process of moving to, well, she works in Ogden, so she's I believe she's moving to Layton. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes, she is moving, in the process of moving to Layton right now.
Well, her qualifications look very impressive, so I'm excited to get to to work with her.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Quinn and Angie, but I think we were all very impressed with her when she came to interview. She was just spot on. She just she was just the right person for the job.
Yeah, I agree. She's going to be a great fit for us.
All right, other questions or comments? Then do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash 50?
So moved.
Do you have a second? All right, any further comments? And we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petty.
Aye.
Councilman Soderquist.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alberts. And Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
All right, and the motion carries and welcome Sherri. Dave?
In case anybody is wondering, the process of transition has already we've we've scheduled some meetings dependent on tonight's action. So now that there's an official contract in place, we will follow through with some of the transition plans that we have. As Wayne already said, Barry's on the clock until the end of the year. That's when he's retiring. So we have a couple of weeks here for as much information, download and transfer as possible. So we're going to be meeting beginning this week and next week to start with that information exchange and transfer that. Sherri will will begin fielding questions and whatnot from developers as part of the transition from from Barry to her. One thing that I would like to say is that when we have four submittals, just simply by the sheer numbers, you you hope that there's somebody wonderful within those four. You like seeing a lot more numbers, a larger applicant pool when you start reviewing. And without speaking for anybody else on the on the evaluation committee, we could have interviewed 100 people and I still believe Sherri would have been the person for us. Even though we only interviewed the two and we had four total applicants, I think that she would be our person even if there were 100 applicants. So I'm excited to work with her and we've already got plans in place for transition.
All right. Thank you. I agree, Dave. All right. Item number 12 is Canyon Meadows Park West phasing and budget and I'm going to turn the time over to Angie Petty and talk about this.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So as everyone is well aware, we've been working really hard on a design for Canyon Meadows West End and just a little bit of background, when we sent out our park survey two years ago, we compiled all the information. We've been working off of that diligently to make sure that we get the correct planning made for this park. So as we have met as a parks committee several times over the last few months, we came up with a presentation that we gave last month to the council, came back as a committee, made some adjustments. Then we came back as a committee, made some more adjustments and just trying to get the biggest bang for our buck. So we so everyone is aware, we, as we presented this pickleball court option, which was ranked highest on our survey, we planned on putting it on the west end of Canyon Meadows and then trying to get the most efficient use of our park impact fees and trying to figure out what would be best for our city. We looked at several different options, putting them in different parks. And as we looked at all the different schematics, it all came back to Canyon Meadows as this just made the most sense and the best fit for the city. So tonight, we have a couple of different options and phasing plans for the council to consider and to discuss. So can we, do we have those that we can share? Yes, I don't have them up on my computer or I I have them on my other computer rather. But basically, we have to pay our to use our impact fees appropriately and before they expire, we decided as a committee that it would make the most sense for us to utilize them now so we don't lose any more value because a dollar today won't get us as much as a dollar and 21 would get us or 22 or 24 whenever we do it. So we want to get it done. We have two different phase alternatives for 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 pickleball courts. Thank you. Okay, so that's our our phase one minimal grading, that gray number one is a parking lot. It is a gravel parking area. There's four pickleball courts with no lights which would cost 250,000 based on our estimates. Our second alternative for phase one, I don't know who's controlling this, but thank you, I'm assuming Lisa, would be a finished parking lot with minimal grading or the minimum grading utilities with the four parking lots, with the four pickleball courts and lights. Now, because we have to run all the utilities and the parking lot is larger, that's the design that we've come up with as our final design, it would also include fencing around the parking lot as we need. around the parking lot as we need. So that would be $760,000. Phase one alternate number three would be the finished parking lot with utilities, the four pickleball courts with the lighting, a basketball court and the bike track. If you can scroll up, maybe it's just my screen. You can see where we have a bike track there. It would be on the furthest west end and then basketball would be up higher.
And Angie, Angie, this is for a non-motorized, it's a non-motorized bike track, correct?
Yes, thank you for, for mentioning that. That would just be for bikes, none, yeah, non-motorized bikes. Our final park completion would be an estimate of 2 million, which would include all the rest of the parking, or excuse me, not parking, walking paths, sidewalks, pavilions and all the other amenities. So we really feel like as a parks committee, we've tried to come up with the best use of this land and we really feel like we need to get a parking lot, a finished parking lot with utilities on there. I want to note on this one that we're looking at right here. Number seven, can you see that square? That's restrooms. We are not putting restrooms in right now, but we would be able to put porta potties in for the time being. So.
Would you roughen the utilities?
That was part of it, right, Brandon?
Yes, that's, that, the, the alternate two would include all roughed in utility stubs.
Thank you.
So do we have any, thank you. There's the restroom. So do we have any questions on our phasing plan? We're, we're coming before the council right now because we want to get this completed. We want to get it, this design completed so we're ready for bid in January so we can start construction in the spring. And we really feel like we need to get moving on this timeline so we don't lose out on any impact fees that may be expiring as well as just getting these amenities in. So as part of that, I am going to say we do have money made available from CARES Act funds. So we have kind of dubbed that MAC funds, as Dave calls it. And so the Parks Committee in an effort and in order to complete this as best as we can, we are asking the council to consider allowing the Parks Department to utilize that money from the general fund that was freed up from the CARES Act funding to the parks. We went back and forth discussing this and we just simply as a city have not budgeted for parks to add any amenities and the fire department, we have budgeted for fire trucks. They benefited most from the CARES Act funding that we received. Our Public Works Department has received new trucks, snow plows, lawn mowers. So as far as all of that goes, we've really taken care of a lot of the other departments. And so I, I personally feel like the Parks Department is well justified in asking for the CARES Act funding so we can actually have this a completed park that we can maintain and our citizens could use.
Thank you, Angie. Are there comments or questions?
Dave, you raised your hand at one point. Were you going to say something? Yeah, if that's okay, I'd like to just add a little bit to the, to the financial picture on this. In our current budget right now, we have, well, let me say this. We currently, right now, have $715,000 in park impact fees that has to go to the construction of new parks, new park amenities. And so that money is available as of right now. In our current budget, this budget year that will end in June 30th, 2021, we have budgeted $390,000. 190 goes to the Cherry Farms Park for the upgraded baseball field and amenities there. So 200 of that we have budgeted currently for this park. We originally estimated 50,000 for a gravel parking lot and 200,000 for the, the pickleball courts. So if you take the $715,000 in park impact fees that are available today, 190 of that is for Cherry Farms Park. 200 of that is already earmarked for this park. There's $325,000 in essentially unallocated or undecided park impact fees. And I know that the Parks Committee has talked about feeling like because of the other advancements, the other progress that has been made on the parks priority list that has been discussed previously, that they felt like they wanted to use that remaining parks impact fee money toward this project. And they felt like that was available. So that gets us $525,000 in park impact fees, which is specifically earmarked for this exact type of project. So the question I assume people want to ask, and I'm just going to try to get out in front of it a little bit, is if we wanted to do any of those alternatives above $525,000, which is all but one of them, where would that money come from? And Angie already hinted at another pot of money and that is the money available from CARES. That money, of course, is available for all types of, all types of projects and it ends up being a priority discussion. The other pot of money where, where money could come from is the Capital Projects Fund. And by the end of this fiscal year, we anticipate having $700,000 available in the Capital Projects Fund. So I didn't say the number, but the CARES money, the money available from CARES is about $300,000. So ultimately, the CARES money, the money available from CARES as well as the Capital Projects Fund, it doesn't matter which one you pull from first or second, it ultimately is the same pot of money. Two revenue sources into the same pot and then that can be used for, for other things. Typically, we would have the conversation about priorities and projects as part of the retreat and part of the budget process for next year. What the Parks Committee ultimately is asking, I believe, is to have some of that conversation now because of the timeline for getting this park in place. So what I'm saying is the Parks Committee is requesting to use money available from CARES and Capital Projects Fund money toward this park to get alternate two or three, if that's what the council wants. If the council wants option one, that money is already available in parked impact fees. If the alternative two or three is preferred and wanting to get more of the amenities available to use more quickly, then there is money available. It's just simply a conversation about which, which projects are a priority. And so that's a conversation that the council gets to have. There's obviously been a lot of projects that we've talked about in the past as far as what money could be used for. What I'm saying is there is money available. It's a priority conversation more than it is anything else. Most of the money comes, well, $525,000 comes from park impact fees. If you want to do an alternative that requires more money than that, money is available. If, if the priority is determined that this is where you'd like to spend it. So I'm happy to answer any other questions about the financial aspects of it. But there is money available. Obviously, we can't get to the 2 million, do all of it right now. But there are options on the table that do not take away from current budgeted projects. We've already, we've already got budget for projects in this fiscal year. This is more of money that would be available for future projects. So now we don't necessarily want to take on the perspective of how much money do we have in the bank right here today? Let's spend it all. I know that there is a longer term horizon and there, we, we don't want to shortchange ourselves by over committing money and not having the ability to foresee things in the future. But that's what we're weighing here tonight ultimately, at least from my perspective. So I'm happy to be here to answer any financial questions and Max here, of course, to, to answer those as well if they're, if they're beyond me.
Thank you, Dave. Are there other questions, comments?
Angie, okay if I make some other comments?
Oh, please do. Yeah.
Okay. Just to clarify, you know, we, we call it and have referred to it as CARES money, but it's really money freed up because of CARES. We're not actually using CARES money, just so everybody in the public understands that CARES money has allowed us to not need to use some of our budget. So that 300,000 that's available is some from budget that we didn't have to use due to the CARES funding that was taking care of some of those items. The second comment I have is, you know, this is, as Dave counted, you know, added up, there's approximately a million dollars of extra funding available at the end of this year. Obviously, we're not trying to use it all for the pub, the parks. But if you look at the, the numbers, as he said, we could do the first one right now, but it's not a paved parking lot. And we're requiring developers to do paved parking. We're requiring others to do paved parking. So to me, option two is the minimum we should be going for. And as Angie mentioned, this money doesn't make any more money for us sitting around. The longer we make wait, the less value it really has. So, you know, if we pursue option two, we would need, you know, commitment of roughly $235,000 coming from that excess that we're projecting for this year. And so it would be helpful to receive that approval from the council tonight so that we can start this bid soon and get into the first part of the year when a lot of developers and others that might be bidding on this are looking for work rather than have to wait until we, you know, get more money coming in from our impact fees. And my understanding is it's coming in at, you know, roughly $80,000 a year, which means we'd have to wait four more years to get it if we didn't budget anywhere to get to option two. So that's just my comments. We have more money available and we can talk about that in detail from priority in January, but at this point, we're looking to say, can we at least use a portion of that so we can kick off bids in good faith, knowing that we have the money for it, for option two at least. Obviously, if you want to go option three, which is a much better park situation, we'd need about 500,000 of that million dollars that's in excess this year.
Thank you, Quinn.
So Quinn, sorry, can I just have you clarify that if we wanted to do number, sorry, I can't see it on the screen, the, the final one, the recommended one? Are you saying you would need 500,000 to complete it?
No, the, the final optimum one was 2 million dollars.
Okay. What was the one that you're referring to then, that you would need the 500,000 in excess?
So it's, it's option three. If she goes back up one page.
Okay.
Yeah, whoever's driving that, can you go back up to look at that?
It includes one basketball court and the track as well as the pickleball courts and the parking lot and everything roughed in.
Okay. So if you can take 500,000 from the MAC funds, is that what you call them, MAC funds?
Yeah.
Okay. Then you're able to finish everything on that, that map right there that we're seeing. And then the remaining pavilions and the other basketball court and everything will come as impact fees come in through the years. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
So is this option two or three right here?
This, this phase three, option three. Right? Alternate, alternate number three, sorry. This is the $1 million option. Alternate number two, you only get all utilities roughed in and a pickleball court and a nice parking lot.
And I would really, really, really love to see us get that basketball court. I just, it ranged so highly on our park survey and I just feel like it would just be such an asset. So I really, really want to get a basketball court in. Did anybody even hear me say that or did I mute myself?
We heard, we heard you.
All right. Other questions?
Well, I, I would like to see it to this point right here on the screen as well. I think this park is overdue. I mean, we still even have a whole nother third phase of the park that still will be weeds and not done and in people's backyards and this one currently is now. And so I, I think it's overdue to get done, whether we can get to the alternate three or not. I, I guess my opinion would be is maybe to hear from Mac or excuse me, Mark and hear your opinion from a financial standpoint of what's really doable. I think we have to, we have other discussions of increased cost of, you know, other things as well with paramedics and stuff, but we, I, I would like to see it get to this point if it's doable.
Okay. My comments are you have, like we're talking a million dollars. Every committee that has met has talked about plans for the coming year or for this. There is a lot of items on the table that are going to cost money. I could relate several of those that this competes against. It's a matter of priorities. We didn't, I want everyone to look long term with all the different projects that we have. It's, as David pointed out, it's not advisable to say, oh, we have a million dollars. How can we spend it today? Because if you spend it today, you're going to postpone other things. It takes a while. We put $200,000 a year currently into capital projects. So that's what was, but this year we budgeted once 170, but two years ago, when we did the property tax increase, we decided that we would try and earmark every year $200,000 to go to capital projects. So 1 million dollars is five years' worth of revenues going to the Capital Projects Fund. I'm not saying yes, you know, the money is there. It's your priority. It competes against several projects that we've looked at. Specifically, Capital Projects always pays for equipment and vehicle replacement and things like if you get, have to replace a vehicle or a piece of equipment that's over $10,000, that's, comes out of the Capital Projects budget. Every year you have some of that. We have streetlights coming up. A streetlight project that we're trying to figure out how to fund. So there are other things that you have to consider and I don't make that decision. That's the council's decision. Where are the priorities? Everyone that sits on different committees and you know what those other things, potential uses of the money are. You've seen it in past budgets and you'll see it in future budgets. So that's kind of where we are. That's where we are today. That's how much we do have. If there are excess revenues in the general fund each year and we don't spend all of, and we don't spend all the money we have budgeted, that is a secondary source of money into the capital projects. This year, we were, reason we're at a million dollars is because we were able to move $400,000 at the end of the year, which we just audited, over to capital projects. If it was not for that, we'd be 100, we'd be $400,000 even less. We'd be at 600, we're talking $600 million. That comes from savings in the general fund. So and I can never predict what that is going to be every year. All I can predict and say for sure is $200,000 is what we currently budget as new money going into capital projects. That's a lot, probably longer than what you wanted, but hopefully that kind of shows you the picture, both short-term. That's a lot, probably longer than what you wanted, but hopefully that kind of shows you the picture, both short term and long term on the finances.
Yeah, no, thank you, that that gave me what I wanted. Then my answer on, based on all of that, what I would, and I would go along with what Quinn was requesting is I would be okay with trying to get to alternate number two.
Number, number two?
Yep.
Alternate number two, the seven hundred thousand dollar option?
Mm hmm.
What do I gotta do to get you up to alternate number three today?
Well, let's pass around a big hat.
Windsor, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. To go on some of the comments made today and I appreciate the work that the committee has done here. I understand the opportunity of making available those COVID monies that displaced some other costs. And we can go all the way to phase two, phase three, we start dipping into those capital dollars. Just so the council understands, four years ago, when I kind of board with the Finance Administration Committee. We started talking about having a goal of twenty to twenty-five percent of the next five years, capital expenditures. In the bank, because you don't know when those capitals, you can plan for some, but you don't know what's ever going to hit. And it's really easy. To dip into that and it's called mining your infrastructure and you can only do it for so long before it's going to come back and bite you. And when it bites you, you have no revenues, no impact fees, then you have to start bonding and then that's a longer term investment. Now, that being said, I don't see the money's coming in a quick method in order to build this park. That's one thing that the parks budget has not been allocated. As our sales tax revenue has increased, we've been able to earmark up to two hundred thousand that towards these capital projects, being selfish toward those projects. And I wonder in hindsight, maybe we should have been earmarking a little bit more for the parks. So one thing I'm going to talk about in the upcoming retreat would be. How we proportion out future sales tax revenues that come in so that. Each each department has an equal opportunity to grow and or expand. It would be easy for us to go with option two, but I think the basketball court needs to get built or it's not going to happen in the next five, six years, it's just going to take too long. That being said, it's a slippery slope as soon as you start dipping into those capital funds to keep doing it, we we need to be diligent. With those monies and earmark them for what they are identified. Paramex service is what we're going to talk about later and there's going to be a cost to the city in the near two, three years. Minor, but there's going to be a cost. The lights and replacing the street lighting program, we'd like to do that quicker than thirty years, but that's another. Cost. All these, all these issues tend to be mitigated somewhat when revenue streams increase. But we can't count on increased revenue streams all the time. But I guess a long story short, I'm not comfortable dipping into the capital money, but I see it to get to this option three. That's what we need to do, but I don't see anything else happening until the parks is able to save up more money to get the rest of the amenities put in.
Thank you, Wayne. So you're in favor of alternate three?
I'm in favor of spending the least amount of capital dollars, but if we don't do alternate three, it's not going to get built. So I guess I'm I'm pushing for alternate three. If we do it, we need to do it now or it's not going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other comments?
Uh, oh, no.
Go ahead, Ann. No, you go ahead.
You sure you don't want to share your wisdom with me before I I open my mouth?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so I I have a question first. I noticed that this includes lighting on the pickleball courts, but not the basketball courts. Can you help me understand why you made that choice?
Well. Brandon, help me out here. It was really because we have to move, if you look, I'm pointing at my screen, you can't see me doing that, but. If you look at the distance from the pickleball courts to the basketball courts, we would run more utilities right there. And there still would be some other. More, well.
I think Angie was more just a, it was, I mean, the 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 committee made every effort to try to to get as much bang for their buck. And adding lighting to the basketball court, just, you know, everything just costs and so. I I think it was felt like that lining at the at the pickleball courts was. Easier to do and. The 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 use is anticipated to be fairly high and and so felt like that might be a little more needed. But that. You know, I guess if there was extra money in the end, we could potentially add lighting to the basketball courts, but. I think it was just felt to cut it off there, we were sitting right at a million dollars anyway, so that's about as much as we felt we could squeeze. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and also would you, I mean ballpark, I'm trying to remember how much the lighting was, it adds a significant cost to each. How much do you think it would be if we added it to the basketball?
Well, just off the cuff, I'm not sure, but you're probably somewhere in the range of. Thirty to forty, possibly fifty grand, depending on, you know, how many lights you do.
So just, just for clarification, I'm not necessarily advocating for lights at the pick at the basketball court, I'm actually concerned about the lights at the pickleball courts. I'm concerned with those homes that are nearby. I am concerned about. You know, the the noise as well, if they're there after hours. Joe, how many pickleball courts have outdoor lights that you visit? Does the North Ogden ones have them?
I have not been to the North Ogden Courts. There are Ogden Courts that have them, Kay'sville has them, Clearfield has them, Farmington has them. They're everywhere and and cities request that they be built with them now. The the lighting that we're using or we plan to purchase is they're very directional lights. And you can find them in West Haven, they're lower to the ground and they're very directional, so they really just cover the court. And there's not a lot of residual lighting outside the courts themselves, so.
Does our parks currently have a closing time?
Yes, I believe, or ten o'clock is what we. Is it ten o'clock? Now I'm questioning myself.
I think it was six to ten.
Yeah, so the the lights would not work after that time.
Okay, and how much?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Let me just add one more thing about, you know, our original plan, we were going to have it all the same level and that would require a lot of extra. Cost to move around a bunch of dirt to make it all. And so this is two levels and. The previous design had the basketball courts right next to the pickleball courts, so if there had been lights. On the pickleball courts, it would potentially leak over the basketball court, but now that they're separated. That was one other reason why I think the light discussion didn't carry to basketball court.
Not that we wouldn't love it. I mean, we'd all be about having those lit up. Yeah, just trying to save us as much money as possible.
And the pickleball lighting, I I'm I'm guesstimating about thirty thousand is the difference between doing without lights and with lights.
Well, the difference being that we, to get the lights there, we have to go under the parking lot. Right? We have to put lights, you run all the utilities. So the difference was actually more than that, if I recall, Brandon, because we had to do the initial, put the transformer in and everything. To get the power over to that side. This would just be an add on to that.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah, there we we had figured that if you had, if you didn't run any power into anything. It it versus what you have to run in with the lighting on the pickleball courts was about fifty thousand.
Okay. Uh, so. Are we looking at, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, you just had asked about noise as well. That that has been something that the committee has been very concerned about and these pickleball courts will be actually two hundred and seventy feet. From the nearest home, correct, Brandon?
It is about two hundred and seventy to the west, we. Uh, I I was double checking some of the distances, the the ones that are kind of the homes that are to the north and east a little bit. They'd just be over two hundred.
Okay.
Okay. So that was another thing we looked at when we researched putting these at different park locations. And it, this was the best fit as far as the sound and proximity to homes.
Okay. Um, so I I really echo quite a lot of what Wayne said. I I would, I feel that the. Cares money that we have would be better utilized than capital facilities money. And I I think option three is what we should do. I think this has been a long time coming and. I don't, I think that parks is something that's going to constantly kind of be pushed off, it's like some ex- extra upgrade in your home. There's always something that's going to come up to to knock it out of priority. I think if we have this ability to do this. I think we should take advantage of it. Obviously, we need to be smart, we need to be wise, there's lots of things we need to do within the city. So I I would I would advocate for number three. Um, I just want to speak real quick, at least my personal thoughts in the park committee or anybody else would like to weigh in, I'd love to hear your thoughts, but. Um, I know we get a lot of questions whenever we bring up Canyon Meadows, is how, why is this park getting so much of the funds? And I know I got some public comment about that, so I just wanted to say from my personal opinion. This is our biggest park, this is, this is fourteen acres of a park, but. So in my opinion, this is kind of like building a new home or remodeling an old home. With our other parks, they're already situated and when it comes to having the space for different. Types of activities, parking becomes an issue. For example, Cherry Farms parking would become an issue with. With pickleball courts or, you know, even at Central Park, that's where a lot of our sports activities take care of, so it, I I feel like the. Parks Committee has weighed this very well as far as why is Canyon Meadows getting all of it, it's basically because it has the most space. Has the most space and it's an unfinished park and it was always master planned to be something like this, even if it's taken us twenty plus years to get here. But that being said, if able to finish this park. There is a little bit of development still left in the city on that west end and, you know, those impact fees will continue to come in and we can. Start to allocate it to our other parks where it's available. Again, it's it's really, we're into some tight parameters as what to add to parks because of the. Restrictions that are placed on them based on where these parks are at, but. I just like to say that, you know, I feel like this is, it's an unfinished park that we can. Add value to our city by finishing it and because of the space that it gives us, it gives us a lot of flexibility and a lot of leeway. And we do have a very small city, so it doesn't take long to get to any of our parks, so that that's my two cents on that.
Thank you, Haley.
I'd love to weigh in on that really quick, too.
Go ahead.
So just to echo that, I was going to say, so I live on the farthest east boundary of the city. And I've timed it in my car and Google mapped just to verify, right? It takes me seven minutes to get to this park. And that's not, I mean, it takes me seven minutes to get to a grocery store, so it's not like I'm driving across town. It's not, it's not a huge trek to get there. So I know that there have been people that have said, well, why is Canyon Meadows getting all the money? Quite frankly, it's just not finished and like I said, we we really want to have this finished, we really want these amenities for our residents. And we we really did look at every other park in the town and figure out how we could make any of these new amenities fit. And we spent hours reconfiguring and it just, this was where it was really best for the city. We have done our part, our parks priority list. This fits in there and we've done everything else with our really limited budget, so. To Wayne's point and Wayne's credit, absolutely, we have tried really hard to save money as a city so we can have projects completed and. So utilizing this money is not something that we ask for lightly because we know that this is a big deal, but. In order to have the best product for our residents, I I feel like it's our our best option is to go with our priority or our. Alternate three is what I would recommend at this time, so and I appreciate you guys looking at that.
I want to just add one more comment to Haley's and Angie's. This this Canyon Meadows Park, I've been racking my brain to, because I've always wanted to have like a gathering place for our community. A city center or gathering place and it's just very difficult in the city to do that with the way it's configured and with. The state road running down the middle of it. I feel like this park is the closest thing we may have to that and I know Country Fair Days Committee is considering doing Country Fair Days there. Next year because they had such a positive experience this last summer. I think it could be a great option for a gathering place for our city and so. I really like the option of of completing it as much as we can, so. Okay, other comments? All right, then. Do we need a formal motion of which? Option, okay, so I would entertain a motion with an option for Canyon Meadows Park West phasing and budget.
Well, I guess I would love to make that. Motion, so. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the master plan for the west side of Canyon Meadows. With the phasing of. Phase one alternate three to include grading utilities. All courts with lighting, a finished parking lot, basketball court and bike track. You don't, do I need to say what funds that we utilize?
Sure, yes.
Yes, okay, utilizing funds made available through the CARES Act and the general fund and capital facilities.
Funds.
Funds.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Petty. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Okay, other comments?
Just point of clarification that with this motion, the first source of money is the impact fee. The second source of money is going to be the displaced CARES Act money and then any additional monies required for this option will then come from capital, capital is the last. Pot that they're going to dip in, is that how I understand the motion?
Absolutely, yes. Michelle, can you please notate that in the note, in the motion that that was the intent?
Hey, thank you, Wayne. Any other comments? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote then, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alberts.
Aye.
Councilman Soderquist.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petty.
Aye, love it.
And Councilman Windsor.
It doesn't matter, aye.
It matters, Wayne. All right, and the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to the park. Honestly, the amount of hours that's been spent by this committee is phenomenal and they have, they have really worked to. To make this a reality and it hasn't been an easy road because Brandon keeps popping out. Numbers and. Then we have to figure out new ways, so, but thank you, all of you, for all the hard work you put into this and you too, Brandon and Dave, so.
All right.
Just a clarification, you gotta, you gotta spend all that money by June thirtieth, right?
Well, any, any element of construction that's not completed would have to, to show as carrying over into the next fiscal year. We'll, we'll know closer when we get it out for bid, what that timeline is like. But if we've been waiting to, to see what the council wanted us to move forward on, and so it will, will be moving forward as quickly as possible.
Can I just make one quick other comment? Remember, you have the bike track going in there and you're tearing down a barn to keep in mind the commitment we've made to the Peterson family. Thank you.
That has not been forgotten.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blair. All right, next item is amended funds commitment for Federal Emergency Management Agency or FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Brick Planning Grant. City Council originally committed up to fifteen thousand in matching funds for the twenty-five percent match for the FEMA brick grant during the council meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty. An error in calculation necessitates an increased match commitment. Previously, the matching amount had been calculated off a fifty thousand dollar project. However, that is only the FEMA portion and not the total project cost. The total project cost is actually sixty-six thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. And the city's twenty-five percent portion would be at sixteen thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. The amended commitment letter reflects an up to amount of seventeen thousand dollars. This is an increase of two thousand dollars from the previous amount committed. Are there comments or questions on this? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the amended funds commitment for Federal Emergency FEMA Brick Planning Grant?
Moved.
Second it.
Okay, any further comments? All right, then we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petty.
Aye.
Councilman Soderquist.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alberts.
Aye.
And Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries.
Quick question on that. Is that just coming from the general fund or will that come from the public safety fund?
Public safety is part of the general fund, so the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne. All right, item number fourteen is the county paramedic transfer. And I'm going to turn the time over to Dave and Chief Tolman for an update on that.
This may not be as exciting as new park amenities, but I have to admit, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this topic. I think that the city is in a really good place for what is coming. And so I'll do my best to paint a picture and, and stay hopefully at, at the thirty thousand foot view of what the Public Safety Committee has been working on and discussing. But it starts for me with the, as I came to Davis County and to South Weaver City and started interacting with county leadership and other and other city leadership from around the county, I became very impressed with the desires of each of those entities, each of those cities and county leadership of just wanting to do the very best that they could for, for their residents. There's always been a desire to take care of residents the very best that they can. And how that relates to the county paramedic conversation from my perspective is I, I've been absolutely impressed with how you look at the history of the county providing paramedic service. And they've always tried to, to do everything they could. And the history of it is such that the, the paramedic service has been provided by the county for a long time. And as, as other entities have grown up, so to speak, as, as population growth has taken place throughout the county. For example, Leighton City then provided their own paramedic service. And there's an entity, a fire district on the south end of the county, South Davis Metro. And they started providing paramedic service. And as the county has grown and population has, has increased, there's been a conversation amongst the county, fifteen cities, two fire districts about what's the best model for service delivery of paramedics. And right now, there are, there are, I want to say six paramedic units throughout the county. Two are provided by the county, two are provided by Leighton City, two are provided by the South Davis Metro Fire District. And the discussion has been that that service level needs to increase for the, for the benefit of the residents throughout the county, South Weaver residents included. And so for, for more than a year now, the county and the cities and those districts have gotten together and talked about the potential transfer of paramedic service from the county to the individual cities. And what this joint group has come up with at this point is a, a really incredible collaborative effort that has brought us to the point of understanding a potential timeline for transfer. And so the, the broad message of the night for us is that the anticipated timeline is January first of twenty twenty-three, that the county would discontinue providing paramedic service and cities or districts would need to step in and start providing that service. In order to get prepared for that type of a transition, there's a whole bunch of different things that would need to happen, including the financial considerations. So right now, each property owner within South Weaver City and throughout the entire county pays a portion of their property taxes directly to the county to provide paramedic service. And then the county uses that for their own service or distributes a portion of that to Leighton City or the South Davis Metro Fire District. So in order for everybody throughout the county to be ready for that January first twenty twenty-three timeline, the county would have to step out of this portion of property tax and cities would have to step into that portion of property tax. And potentially, depending on the area of the county, maybe even do more in order to provide the, the funding necessary to provide paramedic service in their areas. I'm, I'm really impressed with the decisions that this city has made in order to be prepared for this type of a discussion. From going from a volunteer fire department, just, you know, less than five years ago to now being in a situation where we not only would have the ability to handle paramedic service, but to have the financial ability to take care of that as well, is, is really a credit to the, to the council, a credit to Chief Tolman and what he's been able to accomplish in the fire department. We are in a position as good as anybody in the county, I think, to, to make this transition. So the timeline of, is such, in order to be prepared for that January twenty twenty-three deadline, is that the county would step out of their portion of this property tax this upcoming year. In June of this year, for us, the fiscal year ends June thirtieth and a new one starts July first. For the county, their fiscal year is matching the calendar of January first to December thirtieth. But they would step out of the property tax rate and allow cities to step into that in coming up this next year, which means a, a truth in taxation hearing for the county and a truth in taxation hearing for all of the cities. Ultimately, we have the, the option to basically match one for one what the county steps out of and we step into. And it would just simply be a line item transfer on somebody's property tax statement from the county line item down to the city line item, but the dollar would be the exact same. Of course, for us to provide paramedic service long term, the cost would be more than what just our current property tax amount would be that goes to paramedic service. So right now, we're looking at the initial numbers tell us that the county anticipated about sixty-three thousand dollars in property tax for this paramedic portion. And that, again, is what I'm talking about stepping into. But the initial luck and the initial numbers tell us that we're probably looking at about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars the first year to provide paramedic service. So there's a, there's about a, you know, fifty-four thousand dollar gap there that we would need to work toward. We're not necessarily saying how we would have to solve that problem tonight. We're just simply saying that that is the lay of the land and we wanted to give the council a chance to, to ask questions and talk through this potential transfer. I will say that the discussions to this point have been incredibly positive that you know, when seconds matter and somebody calls nine one one and they need a response, we're, we're talking about an improvement in service throughout the county that, that would make a dramatic difference. And you know, not everybody calls nine one one, not everybody wants to call nine one one. Of course, nobody really wants to call nine one one. But in those moments when you need to, as a city and as a county, we want to be prepared to respond in a way that really makes a difference for people and, and literally life-saving when seconds matter. And this is the type of change that would be a benefit for the service level and and really transfer the service from the county to the cities is a discussion about a service model as well as providing a little bit better local control, maybe control is the wrong word, but the ability for local entities to customize and manage that service delivery in a more localized manner. And so that's the thirty thousand foot view. The Public Safety Committee has, has looked at that timeline and and we want to present that to the entire council tonight for discussion or for questions that you have about this potential transfer. Before I hand it over to the council, Keith Tolman, did you have anything to add there or clarify of what I said?
No, you did a great job.
Thank you, Dave.
There you go.
Any comments anyone else wants to make from the safety committee or anything?
And, and just, and just so everybody understands, I mean, because Chief Tolman's done such a good job at staffing our fire department that really the biggest change is just bringing on the third person or the three-handed staffing versus two-handed right now. And that is basically the difference because we have the people qualified to already perform our paramedic service. And I know that will change back and forth over the next year or two as we progress into this, but we are sitting in a very comfortable situation to be able to deal with it. So we appreciate your work on that, Derek.
Welcome.
Yeah, I echo Blair's comments. The three options we faced, this is by far the the least costly to the city. It puts the city in control of its own services. It's not just an ambulance service that some people might think. This is a little bit more. It's very frustrating for our crews to arrive on scene and not be able to administer the proper medicines or techniques because they, they don't have that paramedic license waiting for someone else to show up. So this is a good thing. And I think it's, we're in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. I echo those comments as well. And, and, and yeah, Wayne was talking about the frustration when they're there on the scene and, and these are all all people qualified to do those procedures and administer those medicines, but they don't have the proper authority. So and, and Chief Tolman, my hat's off to you for your foresight and and, and for all the work you and the other firefighters, firemen have done and captains and and also for our safety committee and, and council and all those who've been working so hard to to bring this to fruition and make it happen and in a smooth manner. So. All right, we will move to. Yes, Haley.
I just wanted to, I mean, I'm assuming I'm understanding this correctly, but we, we have to figure out a new route for our ambulance services. So either we have the option of providing our own or having, paying for another city to provide it for us, like Leighton City or, or something.
Yeah, and if I may, just to, just to clarify, I think for most people and, and the general public, when we get into this conversation about the change of service, I think most people assume that when, when the ambulance shows up that they're getting all the care that they could get. There are, there's a basic life support level. It's called BLS. And then there's an advanced life support level ALS. The basic life support level, and, and I should say, there's almost a hybrid or not a hybrid, but a middle ground with an advanced EMT. So when, when an ambulance shows up, there are standards for how quickly that basic life support should be on scene. But when it is a bigger emergency and there's advanced life support that's needed, there's a higher level of care. And right now, we as a city have an advanced emergency medical technician level of license with the state. So we can provide an ambulance level of service. But the county provides our higher paramedic level of service. And so it's not one in the same, even though we will get to the point where we'll be able to provide paramedic level of service on our ambulance. If, if that makes sense, there is a difference a little bit between the ambulance, first responders, first on the scene, basic life support. And then typically the second response of the, the paramedic level service. And Derek can probably provide a better explanation than I just did, but there's an important distinction there. And right now, we provide ELS and we do it very well and our response times are incredible. But we do not provide ALS level of care and that's what is transitioning. Although we do have, like has been said, we have people on staff that are paramedic level licensed. But as an entity, as an organization, we do not have the state license to provide paramedic level of care. So each individual that is on scene has their own individual license level. And then as an organization, as an, as a service entity, we have a license level with the state. So right now, there's a disconnect a little bit for some of our employees who have an individual license that says they are trained and capable to provide advanced life support. But they show up on scene, working for us. And we do not, as an entity, have the license for them to perform, perform the advanced life support techniques that are needed. So this will help us in our city to marry that and align that better. Other cities have different, you know, different needs throughout the county and different reasons why this is a good idea, but that is one of the main ones for us is that, that, that can better align. And we're lucky tonight especially to have Commissioner Kamalu here. Not every city when they talk through this was, you know, has representation from the county to provide their perspective, but if I may step out of line a little bit here and, and maybe ask the commissioner to provide the county perspective on this.
You had a great explanation and I didn't, I didn't know your agenda in advance of my attending this meeting. So I'm like super amazed at what I've been able to witness. All the different items on this agenda. And yeah, fascinating that you would describe this one that I that I am familiar with that. This is a really big deal. Not an easy transition to make, has taken a lot of openness from the various entities, including the elected sheriff, Kelly Sparks. It still is something that he he worries a little bit over because he feels such a tremendous responsibility for this and he knows it's a, it's a big transition. So so anyway, I think the explanation was really great. And I put in the, in the chat that it's a really big deal. So thanks to your chief and everyone who's been helping with the discussions. It, it's looking really good. I, I also saw that phased plan that you're referring to. And, and I'm not the commissioner who's been involved in, in the meetings. So I I still know the high level myself is basically my amount of of understanding. I just know it's a big deal and I, it sounds to me like it's, it's going to be better for all. I just know it's a big deal and I, it sounds to me like it's, it's going to be better for all. And I, yeah, I don't know if that, you know, I don't know that I know any more than you do, Dave, to speak in specifics. Other than I'm super grateful for everyone's work on this.
I appreciate that. And, and just to echo that, it, it really is a big deal and it's an exciting development. And although there's financial considerations that will have to be, um, ironed out and figured out in the future. Um, ultimately this I believe is a really good thing for the, for the community and for the county as a whole.
Yeah, we believe the same.
Well, and Laureen, now you can, uh, report to the county that at least one of the cities is, is preparing very well for that transition. So.
Yeah, it's very cool to hear and witness. It's very cool. Proud of you.
All right. Uh, Blair, did you have any comment? I know you were trying to say something.
No, we're good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, we will move on to new business. Is there any new business?
There, sorry. Don't we have to talk about crosswalks and speed limit signs?
I'm sorry, was that on the, the agenda?
The revised agenda, item fifteen.
The addendum agenda.
Oh, the addendum, I missed that. Okay, yes, let's go to that item first. Dave, did you have information on that or who's, who's presenting?
It, it came from the Public Safety Committee, um, and I'll let Haley weigh in on that a little bit. Um. I apologize. I was just looking for, I, I must not have downloaded the revised agenda either, so I didn't see it on there. Um, so there's been a request, uh, and to look into the possibilities of either requesting UDOT. Um, to allow us to or to have them install crosswalks. Um, in front of nineteen twenty-five east. And the other one is on, uh, seventeen forty east and maybe Haley can give you a better description of why. Uh, she's familiar with both of those, I believe. So Haley, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, yeah, so I got a call from two separate residents that actually in the same week. Um, the one on nine twenty-five east is kind of on the west end where it still has a lot of blind turns. Um, and on the south side, there is not a sidewalk, but it's where a lot of the homes are. So there is a lot of kids that cross the street to go to the north side where there is a sidewalk. And where it's just, it has kind of those tighter curves and it's kind of where people tend to speed anyway. Um, there's been some concerns from residents in that area that that would be a good spot to have, um, some crosswalks go in. And allow from safety crossings. Um, the other one, uh, came from a resident who was actually seen. Um, there are sidewalks on both sides of the street here, but I just think there's a lot of going and front to and from across the street on this. Particular section and he has seen, I think he notated when he called me, he had just about seen a little three-year-old get hit on their bike. They were on one side of the street and they were crossing to the other. Um, but he's seen it before. This is actually near my home, so my kids cross the street to go to their grandparents' house. And, and just like any other part on South Weber Drive, it's a little bit like playing Frogger. Um, but where we don't have any crossing blocks, um. That he just suggested that maybe we consider putting one there. This, this area is more where the road is straight. Um, so you would be able to see it in advance, but it's quite a bit before the school zones. Both of these areas are quite a bit away from the school zones. Crosswalks. Um, so there's not necessarily a better place for people to cross. Um, so tho- those were the two concerns that came my way. Um, and I just filled Blair in on it to give it to public safety. So. And here we are.
And here we, and, and so just so everybody understands background is it obviously South Weaver Drives and UDOT Street. And so we would need to request that from UDOT. And I mean, I, I sat by the one at seventeen forty and it. That's, I didn't go down to the other one. There are a lot of kids that cross through there between, uh, three block radius. They, they, they just dart across. And so I, I think it's worth asking, but I felt, and I think the rest of the Public Safety Committee. Felt that we should actually as a city make that request and not as individuals to UDOT. And, uh, and just wanted to get council's approval to make that request. And then we can start then deal with whether we put it in, they put it in, or if we have money for it, but. I don't know, Brandon, maybe there's a different way to do that, or Dave, you have other ideas. I just know we wanted to do it as a city, not as an individual.
Well, UDOT does have the program Blair of safe sidewalks to schools and that program, they might, they might end up putting the sidewalk into deterring the cross. But if crossing is still required, it might be, they might fall into that program, in which case, uh, we can get some funding for it.
And I, I totally agree with that.
As I understand it, the, the need for crossing isn't so much related to getting to school. And, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but, um. This feels more like just a general need to cross South Weaver Drive in a couple of locations unrelated to. Uh, safe routes to school, which we then have to coordinate with the, the plan that the school has. They have to determine where kids are supposed to cross and, and we work with the school on that plan and where crosswalks go. And crossing guards and flashing lights and all of that. What I understand and, and please correct me if, if I'm wrong, is the request from. Uh, the council and the request, uh, by extension from the residents is for staff to approach UDOT. About putting crosswalks in strategic locations across South Weaver Drive. Are we just looking at having it painted? Are you looking at a request that has flashing lights that when somebody comes, they could hit the button? And the lights would flash without a crossing guard? I just want to make sure we're requesting the right thing.
Yeah, I, Haley, I don't mean to, I, I would think it would need to be at least the one with, I, I don't think this. The, this painting them does much good. We at least need to have something with the flashing lights. And I, I mean, maybe I'm wrong and I don't know why it would be, but it was during the school hours that the kids are going back and forth across there. I know there are crosswalks and crossing guards and all of that, but they were, that's, that's when I was down that way and that's when they were. Jetting back and forth. I didn't go at another time to see if there was a bigger need. But that was just for me going down when I, when Haley gave me the request. So, um.
Sorry, Blair.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
I, I, I feel like most of the kids, i- it's a matter of, you know, you're coming up on the bench and they're coming down and. Both sides can get to the schools fine through sidewalks. I, I don't see it so much as during school hours. Um, it's off school hours and I think it's just that east side accessing the west side and, and, no, sorry. South side accessing the north side and vice versa. You know, that's how those two neighborhoods get together and where nineteen hundred east is there, that's kind of where they just jet back and forth. Um, so I, I think on the nine twenty-five one, we're definitely going to need some flashing lights just because it is right there. Around those blind corners. Um, the one on seventeen forty, I don't know if maybe. Those little flags that you can carry back and forth to both sides, if that would be a cost expense or cost savings. One we can look into, if those are even effective, I'm not sure, but the nine twenty-five one, I think we'll definitely need some flashing lights.
Well, from a staff perspective, it's good to hear that, um. It's good that this is being brought forward and we're happy to take it on as staff and work with UDOT to come up with. Um, safer crossing situations because that's a really important deal. I hate the idea of, of thinking that we would wait. Wait to find a solution after there's a problem with, you know, with some type of accident. Let, let's be proactive and see what we can do. And as staff, Brandon and I can, can connect with the appropriate people at UDOT since ultimately this isn't. This isn't our road. We just get to explain to UDOT what we're dealing with and, and make the request, but, um, Brendan and I can do that.
Thank you. I think that's mainly what we wanted to just have that discussion. Thanks.
There, there was one kind of secondary item related to crossings and speed limit signs that we put in the summary. Um, that is, we've had some residents approach the city about bringing in speed limit signs that have.
Thank you.
Have the flashing lights with the speed limit. So when you're, you know, going higher, then it will flash and tell you. The residents have requested those signs and then said that they might be willing to participate in the payment and the cost of those signs. And so the Public Safety Committee discussed this just a little bit. And ultimately it's a policy decision and that's why we wanted to bring it forward to the council. Typically when staff gets a request for a speed limit sign in a neighborhood, it's a standard sign that's a pole and this white sign on it. Um, we just take care of those as far as a staff process for evaluation of need and placement and the city takes on that cost. In this case, it's much, much higher expense to have those flashing lights, um, associated with those types of signs. And so the Public Safety Committee felt like the council needed to weigh in on whether or not that's an expense the city should evaluate. And pay for like we do with our other standard process. Or if that's something that citizens should participate in purchasing when they feel the need and, and bring that forward. So. The committee wanted to essentially ask that question to the council. Should residents participate in the cost of those flashing lights? Or do we just take that on as a city and evaluate it like we normally do? So staff's looking for direction there.
What is the approximate cost difference?
I, I thought they were, I, I mean, a regular sign is probably a couple hundred bucks, but I think they're close to. Didn't you tell me about between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars, Dave?
Yes. Yeah, it, it approaches thousands of dollars rather than hundreds of dollars.
And do, do you have, I mean, Wayne looks like he wants to talk, but I think we decided as a public safety committee that. If we identified those problems, we feel the city should be paying for that as a committee.
Yes, yeah, it's a bad precedent to have the public have to pay for safety devices. I think we just start budgeting for it and. Your mark of where they need to go.
So how do we handle those requests? I mean, if that becomes our policy. Do we have residents from every neighborhood of the city now saying, I want that sign, I want that sign? How do we determine what is a. Uh, for lack of a better word, valid request for a sign like that?
We evaluate that as staff based on, based on need essentially. Um. We evaluate the request, uh, based on the amount of traffic, the speeds, things like that. Um, there have been requests for speed limit signs that we have denied, uh, because they, they weren't necessary. There have been other requests that. For signage that, uh, we have felt were appropriate and we have placed signs. And so. Um, there are various factors there related to amount of cars, um, typical speed. Uh, a lot of times we will start with our speed trailer. That is getting old and, and, and needs replacement. Speaking of capital projects, um, that's one of those that we need to look at, but. Uh, speed trailer is one that helps us gather specific data about the number of cars and, and the speeds that people travel. And so sometimes that's part of the evaluation of those types of requests.
All right, then, uh, does staff have their direction?
I got, I got the sense from the, uh, from the council that. At least Blair and Wayne, uh, as the committee, that we're bringing forward to the council, whether or not. A resident should pay. The committee recommendation is the city takes on that cost. I didn't hear if anybody else wanted to. Uh, discuss the other option or just agree with that.
I would agree with that. I would just request that we have, um, written in policy what the evaluation procedure would be. So it's very clear that if, if a road doesn't warrant a sign like that, that we don't put one out just because there's a residential request for it.
I agree as well. My, my only added comment would be if you have a resident that wants one and the city thinks no. Then we need to decide, well, could they pay for their own?
I was gonna kind of echo what, what Quinn just mentioned is. How, how do we go for that? I mean, I know there's a resident in Riverdale on South Weaver Drive who put one in and, and it definitely slows down traffic. It did its job.
Do they, I, I think they have the right, it's their property, you know, that they want to put it on there because that, that, that sign is on their property, I believe.
Right, well, my, my, my worry about that is, and not, not that I want to deny them that right, but. Is it possible to that, you know, eventually every one of these, not, not everyone, but, you know, we get multiple neighbors on the same street with one or just a few. Is it something that's gonna look, um, busy? Later that we need to have some sort of code on, some sort of jurisdiction on, or is it just? A free-for-all on that?
I, I think that's something we probably have to address as a policy so that we make sure that that doesn't happen. And then turn it over to our code committee, Haley and Wayne.
We've got our hands full. We're like this far into a very big elephant, so.
I, I, I do think we can address that in a policy and, uh, and, and go from there and. And I think it'd be okay. I think most of us know a lot of the trouble spots. And, uh, I think it's, uh, pretty, we don't have a lot of roads like some cities, so.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm happy to do a little bit.
Find like seven signs and put them in front of Blair's house. Is that cool?
Probably do a lot of wonders over there.
No problem. I noticed that, I noticed I got new ones all the time.
Okay, then Dave, everybody seems to be in agreement.
Okay, sounds like city will take on that cost and we will put together more of a written policy on, uh, on how to proceed.
All right. Thank you. Now we're to new business. Any new business? Yes, Haley?
I don't have a new business. I just have a question, um, about if we got the, uh. Oh, the funds from the rehab truck from this, from region one yet? Did the, I was just wondering if those came in? I believe I thought Chief Tolman thought that they would come in within seven days. I was just wondering if they had come in since he submitted that.
So we don't, we won't get reimbursed until we actually make the purchase. And so I actually met with the, uh, Davis County Emergency Manager this afternoon. Um, to get his sign off on the project, which he gave. So now we'll go back to the committee with his approval. And so we're, we're nearing final approval. Um, but yeah, we, we will spend the money and then get reimbursed. That's how that will work.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Sorry, I was thinking that you had purchased that for that. Got it. That's all for me.
Thank you, Haley. Anyone else new business? Okay, then we'll go to reports. Um, I kind of mentioned this earlier, but Dave, Quinn and I met with the county planner Jeff Euler. And Parsons representatives to discuss the easelman ax- acquisition for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. Extending from the Box Cogurt under US eighty-nine, which is slated to be built or constructed this coming summer. Um. And that went well. And like I said, we'll be meeting with, uh, Geneva Pitt on Thursday to discuss the same and. Um, hopefully Parsons was very amenable to the idea and hopefully Geneva will be as well. So, um, I think all other meetings that I've been involved in, which seems like a huge amount. Were either discussed in previous items or will be discussed by committee chair. So let's go to Councilman Halverson.
Now, we've basically talked about everything on our committee, so we're, I'll, I'll end.
Okay, Councilwoman Alberts.
Um, the PR committee met and we were able to finalize our choice for a website designer. And Dave heard back from them and they'll start the migration of our current website, um. Here by about middle of January and we should have our new website up and live by January twenty-second. So that's yay. That's a nice view in the rearview window. Um. Did I say that right? Rearview mirror, whatever. Anyway, um, other than that, I just, uh. Want to put out for the public to remind them that the bells are available at the FAC. And I believe they've dropped off a basket on the outside of City Hall. I haven't been there to check yet, but, uh, you can pick up your bells there for the. Ringing of the bells on December twenty-fourth at six o'clock. So hope all will attend and that, that's going to be a pretty cool thing to be able to do this year. So.
Well, I'm, I'm excited. I will. I'm, I'm excited. Thank you, Haley. I, I'm trying to, I'm pinching myself thinking about the website because I don't know how long we've been trying to get something to happen there. It's been years, so.
Yes, thanks.
I'll believe it when I see it, but it sounds like good news, so. All right. Uh, Councilman Soderquist.
Uh, just a couple items. Uh, we met with the gravel pit uh representatives, you know, with an quarterly meeting. Um, we continue to discuss ways to try to understand and measure the dust and wind flows and mitigation options. So we'll continue to do that with them. Um, stake of Parson has removed some graffiti that had been painted on their new wall there on the north side of that pit. Um, they're trying to keep that clean and appropriate. Um, so I think there's positive discussions moving forward there. Uh, just one other comment relative to the parks. Um, I know some residents are actually gathering money to donate and help pay for some of the amenities and upgrades. And so, you know, any residents that want to do that, uh are more than happy to have their help and have them um help things get done faster.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Soderquist. Uh, Councilwoman Petty.
Um, all of my committees have been uh reported on. I just want to say thanks to everybody and I'm super, super stoked about the park, so thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Angie. And uh Councilman Windsor.
The code committee uh met today uh and finalized, I got to the end of the alphabet on all the use definitions. Uh, yeah, happy fingers, Haley. Uh, so now staff's going to clean up the identified definitions and present that document to the committee to review over the holidays. At which point we'll meet again on the twenty-ninth and uh go over those with the expectation to recommend that to the planning commission for their January's meeting for their review. Uh, I don't know if they're gonna get through all of it in one meeting, but we'd like to piecemeal the information toward the planning commission rather than make wholesale changes uh presented all at once. This is gonna be too much information. While they're reviewing that, we will then start applying these uses to the different zones as we think appropriate. And that'll be the next document to forward on. Once the two have reached a consensus, then the council will get an opportunity to review and adopt those changes. Uh, we're hoping to bring all of chapter ten forward to the city council in one complete document. Um. Timeframe for that, you don't know right now, but that's the best we've got. We've completed the use definitions and we're moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Wayne. Uh, Dave?
The only item that I have to report is related to a conversation the council had uh last month uh regarding the grocery study. And uh I met with the uh developer and property owner uh just this last week and uh discussed more about that grocery study. And ultimately, the three-way split was uh agreed upon by the other entities, just as the city council had discussed doing a three-way split in, you know, in our November meeting. There was clarification on the cost. Um, in the meeting, our city council meeting, we discussed seven thousand five hundred dollars is the cost. The actual cost uh will be six thousand five hundred dollars. So splitting that three ways, our portion will end up being um two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars if my math is correct. And I know people question my uh on-air math, so uh we're splitting the sixty-five hundred dollars three ways and uh and we'll be able to get that grocery study um moving forward and hopefully lead to a development in the future. That's all I've got.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Dave. Uh, Brandon, did you have anything?
I don't, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Mark?
I was gonna say, we've had a lot of discussions tonight and this last year on CARES money. Our next meeting isn't till January, but this Friday, we should know, know whether uh CARES Act version two is going to happen. The federal government has to make a decision this Friday. They said they will definitely make a decision. So the way maybe, there may be additional funding coming forward at the end of this year to be discussed in the next fiscal year, the next calendar year, still be our fiscal year, so. That's, the effect of that is, we'll have to wait and see, but uh in January, hopefully I'll be able to make a report, something related to that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Chief Toman, did you have anything?
I don't have any extra to add. Thank you.
Okay. And Jamie, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Uh, Michelle, any, anything? And Lisa?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. All right. And we will move. Uh, I just want to say before we go out of open session, um a lot of exciting things happening in our city right now and it seems like so many of the things that we worked on so hard for so long um are starting to come to fruition and that's a really good feeling. So thank you to everybody for all of your hard work. I, I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session per UCA section fifty-two dash four dash two zero five one D to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
We'll move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.